Seeing that six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call our Sandy City Council work session to order. I will start off with a review of tonight's agenda. I'll start with any changes to the agenda. Are there any? Will there be? Are we looking to have any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? All right. Under a presentation, we have a grid resilience and emergency management presentation from Portland General Electric. Is there anything for staff before we do that tonight? Okay, under our consent agenda, we have our Sandy City Council meeting minutes for our March eighth meeting, plus our pre-purchase equipment for existing wastewater treatment plant condition improvement improvements project. Any questions or comments for staff on that? Okay, ordinances, public hearing rogue fabrication zone change, anything? Then we're going to go into our public hearing for House Bill two thousand one code amendments. Then we're going to go into our public hearing, amending Title thirteen of the Sandy Municipal Code. Questions or comments on that? Okay, under new business, Tickle Creek Village Trail easement fee in lieu proposal. Any questions on staff before we do that tonight? Counselor Walker, Kathleen, hey. You're unmuted already.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there's a couple of questions that came up. I just wanted to give folks a heads up because I just became aware of them a few minutes ago myself. On that, if the planning department could kind of be around for kind of clarifying what was proposed in the or what's the final orders are for those apartments for as far as trail. Kelly, hi Kelly, what was proposed in that Tickle Creek apartments as far as the required trails? And then also a question came up with respect to the fact that if the trail, if the stuff that's mentioned about having SDCs in the in the staff report from the Parks Board, it mentions doing something about SDCs and you know, credits and things like that, but if the SDC, if the project is not in the master plan at the time that this is all approved, then we may have a problem trying to, you know, to do it otherwise because it's not in the plan. So those are a couple of things that kind of came up at the very last minute. I'm sorry, they just kind of sparked my concern. So I just wanted to make sure Kelly, you were probably there to answer some questions when we got to that topic, since it's normally just would probably just be Sarah.
Heck, you know, by my judgment, that's probably about an hour and forty minute heads up there. I think that's good. That's why we do this. That's great. Perfect. Okay, and then what's next? What did I miss? Contract approval owners, representation services for Phase One wastewater system improvements. Anything on that? Okay, we will then move into our report from our city manager, our committee and council reports. And then a reminder to council is that we actually have back to back executive sessions immediately preceding our meeting this evening. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and kick off our work session on affordable housing options. Jordan, do you want to get us going or is it Kelly that's doing that tonight?
Yeah, I can. I can take it unless Jordan wants to say a few words beforehand.
Oh, you don't. I don't need to make this meeting longer, so I'll let you just jump in.
Okay. So I'll just jump right into it and I'm going to really leave most of this to Beth and the people that know a lot more about affordable housing options and I want to leave a good chunk of time for questions and answers. So just a real brief, the city council created a goal for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one to evaluate solutions, create more affordable housing options in Sandy. I realize we're nearing the end of that biennium. We have about three months left, but instead of staff trying to take this goal on, we decided to hire Eco Northwest. They're much more versed in affordable housing options and evaluating their potential. So we hired Eco Northwest. They put together an attached memorandum and PowerPoint. It also times out really well with House Bill two thousand one before you tonight. One of the requirements of that house bill is to look at ways to encourage more housing options. So this is one of those ways is to review something like the document before you tonight and to determine if you want to move forward with anything. The other thing which Ms. Goodman can go into a lot more detail, most likely than I can. She's a lot more involved and knowledgeable on the subject, but is with the House Bill two thousand three adoption of the state legislature. That's going to be a requirement that the city of Sandy complete a new housing needs analysis by two thousand twenty-four, and part of that analysis is going to be looking at creating more affordable housing options. We're going to be state mandated to do so. And so luckily, this work that the council started in this biennium for looking at affordable housing options ties in really well with the two house bills, two thousand one and two thousand three that were recently passed. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to them.
Kelly. Yes. And I apologize to screw you up right during your introduction there. So C four did a countywide, the county did a countywide housing assessment recently. And the city didn't participate because we had just recently completed our housing assessments, my understanding. But then I guess I just heard you say that we're about to do another one in two thousand twenty-four. And of course, I'm not an expert on this. I don't know how often we should be doing these, but do you mind taking me through why we didn't participate in the countywide one if we have to go ahead and do another one shortly?
Sure, and it's actually convenient because Ms. Goodman was actually the consultant that Clackamas County hired for that exercise as well. So we completed one and I think two thousand nine, we then did another one in two thousand fifteen in-house. And then I believe Clackamas County started theirs in either two thousand, I think in two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen. So it came quickly on the heels of the one that we just had adopted locally, and then that DLCD also acknowledged at the state level. We decided at that point, we didn't want to participate in the Clackamas County one, or at least not pay more money to participate in that. I don't, and Beth can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if that housing needs analysis looked in depth in accordance with House Bill two thousand three. So my guess is that Clackamas County is going to have to do some additional work with Eco Northwest in hindsight after that house ball passed.
Well, I mean, our counties required to, I think, I think in fact, Clackamas was the first county to do it. So I mean, we were very ahead of the game. So they may not have to redo it, but the cities that participated might have to do more in depth, probably.
Correct. I think you're correct. I think you're correct on that. Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. Sorry.
We're going to be on eight year cycles from here on out. So we'll have to do one in two thousand twenty-four. The next one will be two thousand thirty-two, two thousand forty. If you're a smaller city or you're in metro, I think they're every six years, but the city of Sandy, it's every eight years.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Don.
Hey, just a quick question. As far as our role tonight, is this an inform only to feed other planning exercises later, or is there some ask at the end of this?
I mean, it's really open ended. It was your guys' goal in this biennium to start looking at affordable housing options. This is what we've done to date is what's being presented tonight. You can give us as much direction or as little direction as you would like tonight.
Right, thank you.
Don't forget to put that hand down, Don. All right, guys, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Goodman.
Thank you, Kelly. So thank you for having me here this evening. As Kelly mentioned, I've done housing needs analysis across the state for more than three dozen cities, small cities, big cities, inside metro, outside metro, including the two thousand nine housing needs analysis that we did for Sandy. I was working on that one. So Kelly was just alluding to the fact that in House Bill two thousand three, cities are now required after they do their housing needs analysis, which is now called a housing capacity analysis. After they do that, one year later, they're required to produce a housing production strategy. And what a housing production strategy does is it's a set of policies and actions that the city says they will take to address their needed, their needed housing that's identified in the housing needs analysis. So that includes things like income restricted affordable housing development, middle income, which often is called workforce affordable housing. It can also include things around fair housing. There's a lot of different things that that may be in a housing production strategy. We're in the process of developing the two of the first ones in the state, one in Medford and one in Tuolatin. Right now, we'll have those drafted up by the end of June. And what I've noticed is that you've got a year after you adopt your housing needs analysis to develop and adopt your housing capacity analysis. Not your, I'm sorry, your housing production strategy. Um, that's probably not enough time. I would suggest cities and I am suggesting cities start their housing capacity analysis and they're about six months in, start their housing production strategy so that you have more time to develop your housing production strategy. There's a lot to talk about. The memorandum that I developed for this meeting, I think it's something like thirty-one pages long. It's what I usually start a housing production strategy with when I, when I begin one. So it's a lot of the same considerations. So that's the the highest level of overview. Mr. Mayor, as we go through, shall we just allow people to ask questions and you'll moderate?
That works for me, Beth. If that works for you.
It works for me perfectly.
Do you have, do you have a presentation?
I do. I'm not even showing it. I do, and I will share my screen.
So with that, then what I, well, hold on, I can never mind. I'm good. I can make it bigger. Go for it. I'll moderate.
Okay, um, and so what I want to make sure of, I've presented a small amount of data of the type you would have in a housing needs analysis in this presentation. So it's meant to get at housing affordability in Sandy. Why is it important and what does it mean? We can talk a lot about the data in here, but I'd like to leave you more time to talk about the potential policies and to ask as many questions as you want to about those. And I know you've got a very long night ahead of you. So with that, I'm going to hop right in. And I will assume that if you have questions, Mr. Mayor will tell me you've got questions. So as we're thinking about housing markets and what is the future need for housing and the current need for housing in a community, what do we think about? When I say we, I mean economists and planners and academics and so on and so forth, what we think about what factors most affect housing preferences and housing, well, more housing demand, what housing choices people are making. The age of the adults in the household, the household composition and the households income. And composition and income are very much related to age, where household composition changes in a fairly predictable way. We've shown you here a stereotypical version of it. Income tends to increase from, from young adulthood to about retirement, at which points it decreases. So as we're thinking about housing need, we're thinking about the demographic and the socioeconomic characteristics of any city. And of course, each of our cities in Oregon are distinctly different. So thinking about this, looking at median household income in Sandy at about seventy-three thousand compared to Clackamas County's median of about eighty thousand and Oregon's of about sixty-two thousand. So you're a little more affluent than the average in the state and a little less than some other communities within Clackamas County. You can see you've got households with income levels at all income levels. It's really a nice little straight line there, straight stair step. So as we're talking about housing affordability, we'll be referring back a lot to income information and a lot of this is based on this income information. So before I hop into sales prices, I just want to mention, I don't, I haven't brought information here about age and household composition in Sandy. When you're doing the housing needs analysis, you certainly would look at those things. What I can say, simply based off of what's going on around the state, is that we've got aging of the baby boomers. And so the fastest growing group across the state is people over sixty-five years old. That group is going to continue to increase their share of total households over the next twenty years. And then we've also got the millennials who are forming their households right now. And the people after them, Generation Z, who will be forming their households in, over the next twenty years. These are the folks who are going to have the most impact on the types of housing that we need over the next twenty years. So going forward, looking at median sales price in two thousand twenty, Sandy was hanging out right at about four hundred and fourteen thousand, lower than Happy Valley and places like Gladstone and above places like Silverton and Cornelius and Malala. We just chose some cities in the region that were reasonable to compare Sandy to. So you're right in the middle. Looking at monthly rent costs, this is from the American Community Survey. So this information is from a five-year period from two thousand fifteen to nineteen. It's the easiest available data on rents. It's also probably on average a little low. But at least we see where Sandy fits in, in the region where you're below places like Happy Valley and Gladstone and above places again, like Silverton, Malala and Cornelius. So your rents and your housing are a little more expensive than some cities, but certainly below other cities. We did a little bit more digging on monthly rent costs to get a little bit better idea of typical asking rents. Looking at CoStar data and looking at apartments.com. And as I said, the American Community Survey was a little bit low. In apartments.com, what we're seeing is fifteen hundred dollars in rent for a two-bedroom unit. That may be a little bit high. You get an idea of between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred is where we're looking at, depending on the size. And I see a counselor with his hands.
Carl Exner, go ahead.
Figure out how to get my hand down a little bit. There it is. Some of your numbers are, because I'm a realtor and I deal with these numbers day in and day out, they look surprisingly correct. Although I would say that you're right, that the rental numbers look kind of high. Although I have known personally, people who are renting in eighteen hundred dollars for a house, that's a three-bedroom, two baths. So your numbers look pretty correct. Are all the numbers very recent or the spread over last, like a census, last ten years? Or how accurate do you think your numbers are getting?
These are from the last five years, two thousand fifteen to nineteen, from the American Community Survey. So that's from the census. The CoStar data here at twelve hundred for whatever CoStar knows about in Sandy, which I would say is probably not a lot of housing. That's from February twenty twenty-one. Apartments.com is from February twenty twenty-one. So these are fairly recent numbers.
Yeah, our, our rental vacancy is well below two, three percent in the city. It's just so minimal that people can charge almost anything they want to, especially for people that are out of the box, have animals, large numbers of kids, maybe two families, that kind of stuff.
Certainly.
Way up.
And that is a sign, and I've seen this all over the state, where you've got rental markets that have one or two percent vacancy rates. That's a sign of a rental market that's not very healthy. You need a little bit more vacancy in order to allow people to move around from unit to unit as they need to. Sandy is not unusual in having such a low vacancy rate, but that is a sign of stress. Are there any other questions before I go on? Okay. So then we're going to talk about cost burden for a few moments. When you start talking about housing affordability, what is housing affordability? We'll, we'll talk about this a fair bit in the next few slides. One measure of is your housing affordable to your household is what percent of your gross income do you spend on housing costs? So if you're talking about rentals, you're talking about rent, you're talking about certain utilities like electrical and heating. If you're talking about homeownership, then you're talking about mortgage. Your insurance, evidently hard word, and the mortgage interest you're paying and that kind of thing, plus those same sort of utilities. So about thirty-three percent of Sandy's households are cost burdened. Eleven percent of them are severely cost burdened, meaning that they spend fifty percent or more of their gross income on those kind of housing costs. You see Sandy is right in the middle again, below places like Gladstone and Cornelius and Malala and above places like Silverton and Fairview and Happy Valley for cost burdened. Happy Valley is its own special sort of case, I would say, in terms of the housing market. So looking at this more specifically, a quarter of owners are cost burdened. Fifty percent of renter households are cost burdened and twenty-one percent of renter households are severely cost burdened. So there's a lot of cost burden among renter households. This isn't as high as I've seen it in some other communities, but it's certainly very high where half of your households who are renters are unable to afford their rent. Their rent is not affordable to them. So let's talk about what does affordability mean? A complicated slide here. But we're looking at across the Portland metro, so the three county area, the median family income according to HUD for a four-person household is ninety-two thousand one hundred dollars. And we'll talk about some Sandy specific information within this in a few moments. When you talk about households that need affordable housing, a lot of the time, people mean two different types of affordable housing. They mean income restricted affordable housing, and that's housing that's generally affordable to households down here in the less than fifty percent of median family income, so earning forty-six thousand dollars or less for the household. When you talk about workforce affordable housing or middle income affordable housing, that's housing that's typically between about sixty percent of median family income and eighty percent for renters, but up to a hundred and twenty percent for homeowners. So as we're talking about different levels of affordable housing, you've got income restricted affordable housing, that's for the very lowest income households and that middle income affordable housing. So when we look at the median sales price of about four hundred and fourteen thousand within the Portland metro region, you have to have a hundred and ten percent of the median family income. So about a hundred and one thousand dollars to afford that four hundred and fourteen thousand dollar unit, and that's assuming a certain amount of down payment and, and other things. Looking at the fifteen hundred dollar two-bedroom unit, the asking rent, you're looking at sixty thousand dollars or sixty-five percent of median family income. Those are both about where I would expect those to be in terms of affordability within the region. And then if we look at some other Sandy specific information, these are the same categories of income groups. In Sandy, fifteen percent of households or about six hundred and twenty-four households are in this extremely low income group, meaning that they earn less than twenty-eight thousand dollars per year. So we've got, let's see, twenty-eight percent of households in this group that what they can afford is publicly subsidized income restricted affordable housing. You probably don't have enough of that, which is why you're seeing such high levels of cost burden.
Ms. Goodman? So what kind of confused me when I looked through these earlier was, you know, we kind of went from that median income level for Clackamas County, and then we jumped to this ninety-two thousand thing. And so then I'm kind of getting confused about how.
Okay, so the household income, I think you're referring to back here somewhere.
Seventy-three thousand, right.
Okay, this is household income, which is different from median family income. A household income includes all households, whether they're, they're single person households or multiple person households, they're related or not related. So if you think about a town like I live in, I live in Eugene, you might have a bunch of student households where students live together and their incomes are very low. When you look, compare household income in a place like Eugene, family income is much higher because then you're discounting people who in the census are counted as families. So multiple people related to each other, living in the same unit. So household income is simply different than median family income.
So is our median family income in Sandy ninety-two thousand?
No, your median family income in Sandy is lower than that. What we're doing is we're using the median family income. Well, I don't know if it's lower than that. I assume it's lower than that. We're using the median family income to figure out what is fifty percent of median family income within the region mean? That means forty-six thousand dollars. So fifty percent of ninety-two thousand dollars is forty-six thousand dollars. And so we're using that to figure out what, what incomes are in our different groups. So if you imagine this being in then, I don't know, Coos County or something like that, the median family income is much lower. So a hundred percent of median family income there might be fifty thousand dollars. So our groupings by percentages are the same, no matter where we're looking, but the actual amounts of money are different. This is how affordable housing people think about affordable housing. This is how HUD thinks about affordable housing. So we've put it into this context, which is a different context for you, of course. Different way of thinking about it. Does that answer your question?
She's nodding.
Okay, so this information here, these percentages and these number of households are Sandy specific information. So within households that earn less than twenty-eight thousand dollars, about fifteen percent of your households are about six hundred and twenty-four households in Sandy earn less than that. When we come up here to earning more than a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, about twenty-two percent of your households or eight hundred and ninety-five households earn that amount or more. So again, these income groups here, this is your middle income in your workforce housing, where the housing market certainly won't build housing that's affordable at less than fifty percent of median family income. It's just not financially feasible in most cases to do that. When you look here at this middle income group, not much housing is built that's affordable at between fifty percent and eighty percent of median family income. New rental housing just simply doesn't pencil out at those low rents. You have to have higher rents that would put it in this, this higher group. So you'd have to have more income to afford it because of things like the cost of construction, the cost of building space for parking, all of these other things that you have to do when you're building new housing. So when you as city councilors are thinking about what should our housing policies be? One thing I'm hoping you'll think about is what are our priorities? Where should we be spending public money on affordable housing? Let's just use the, the kind of somewhat silly example. Very rarely is funds, public funds used to support housing that is affordable at more than a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent of median family income. That housing is being built, it's financially feasible, those developers don't need help to make that housing, that housing pencil out. You might look at housing that's affordable at eighty, fifty to eighty percent of median family income. Most of this housing that's actually built does have some public subsidy in it and does need help to make sure that it's financially feasible. And all of this housing that's built at less than fifty percent of median family income, that's affordable to these households. All of that has some or all publicly funded. It's really hard to build housing that's affordable at this low income. The other thing to know is that households here in this extremely low group are the ones who are not at this point homeless, but are at risk of being coming homeless. So when we, when we're talking about at risk of becoming homeless, it's generally in this group. It could be this group also. But most frequently, that group.
You got a question from Carl Exner.
Yes, real quickly, I'm, I'm very pleased that.
He muted himself somehow, though. You need to unmute yourself, Exner.
Okay, I'm very pleased that the numbers you're kind of throwing out there because they look very similar to what I'm experiencing. We got a study here just the last few days anticipating this. In the last three months, we've had thirteen houses in Sandy, nine seven oh five five, that were between two hundred and ninety thousand and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And my mortgage people tell me a three hundred and, take an average, three hundred and thirty thousand dollar house takes about eighteen hundred dollars to be able to afford, and that's about equates to about sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars a year. So in the last year, past twelve months, we've had like forty-three houses that are between that two ninety and. We've had like forty three houses that are between that two ninety and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And but you're right on about the average with the house in Sandy. You can't pick up anything new. Under four hundred thousand dollars and all those that I looked at that are in that lower category, they're all old houses. Margin, very difficult to finance, very difficult to buy into a lot of repairs, so.
That's what I would expect.
We're tight.
Yeah, Jeremy.
Yeah, on this slide, I think you said that pretty much the the last three or the lower three. Pieces of the chart there is where you would find subsidies if we want that type of housing to be built. And so that's basically forty eight, forty nine, fifty percent of housing that you're suggesting in Sandy. That would be have to be subsidized in some way. To be economically feasible for a developer to develop how this part of the housing market. What are some of those examples that you have seen other places to fit into some of those categories? Like, you know, one may be higher than the other to be able to have that that fifty to eighty percent of MFI versus thirty to fifty percent. What are some examples of those subsidies?
Oh, can we talk about that in a few minutes?
Sure, yeah.
Subject of next section.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks.
And I will mention that of cities are of course not alone in in the subsidies needed. The state plays an important role. The federal government plays an important role. So this is not entirely on the city, but the city can play a big role. So. Can I go on or do other people have questions right here? All right, I'll continue on. All right, so affordable housing is important in part because you you. Cities are looking at allowing for development of a wider range of housing types. Some of which will be naturally more affordable. So for instance, this is cottage housing types. Cottage clusters are small units that are often clustered around a central area. It's one of the types of housing that that you look at in that one might look at in House Bill two thousand and one. When we look at different types of housing like duplexes here, we've got manufactured homes. Those are are very important for affordable housing. They play an important role in affordable housing. So housing affordability is important because you want to have housing that's affordable to your workforce. So people who work in Sandy, of course, you guys are just a little further out than than say the metro cities that are kind of smooshed together. You want to prevent homelessness and as I said, the lower income groups are more at risk of being homeless. When you look at entry level rental costs. You want to have housing affordable to your young people to stay in Sandy. So if you want your kids to be able to live in Sandy, they have to be able to find a place that's affordable. Over time, housing has become less affordable in part because units have become bigger and bigger. And I'm not at all sure that 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 process is going to stop. But also, what are the opportunities to allow smaller types of housing? So things like accessory dwelling units are smaller types of housing, cottage housing is smaller types of housing. Duplexes can be smaller. They can also be very large, so so on and so forth. What are the opportunities to allow some smaller housing as well as allowing larger housing? Which is, I think, something that Sandy is is also interested in. So the point here is a variety of housing types are important. Taking us on to policies that can support development of affordable housing of all types of affordable housing. I'd like to start with the factors that influence housing development. So we've got land and of course Sandy can directly influence land. Because land within the urban growth boundary is largely under Sandy's control for making sure that there is enough land. Making sure that land has the right zoning. So that's under under Sandy's control. Infrastructure to that land, of course, Sandy can't pay for all of its infrastructure. But looking at water and wastewater, stormwater, transportation, those are all things that Sandy plays a role in. Looking at market feasibility. So the question of what are the things that cities can do to influence whether housing can be built, whether it's financially feasible? We'll talk about these sorts of policies in a few minutes. City usually cities usually have little influence on access to capital. Occasionally cities do, but that's not something that most cities talk about. So let's let's remember that cities don't build housing and that Sandy is only one of the player. For instance, land is often privately owned and private owners get to choose whether they develop their house their land or not. So then looking at the different strategies as we go and we talk through some of these strategies. Realize that that different strategies have more and less impact on production of housing. So for instance, producing informational resources may have little impact. But if nobody knows how to build housing in your community, it's 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 an important thing. It's necessary, but not sufficient to get more housing built. Partnerships and leveraging efforts and resources are necessary for supporting affordable housing development. But again, they're not sufficient in and of themselves. Looking at your regulatory barriers and making sure that you've removed the regulatory barriers that you can. And the community chooses to remove, that's necessary. And then as we go on up, you start talking about money. So land acquisition and disposition. Allocating funds directly to support affordable housing, looking at waiving different fees or charges. So as as I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking about one of the cities we worked with a couple of years ago being Madras. Their housing market was completely frozen for a number of reasons. And so we did a housing strategy with them and we looked at all of these different pieces and figured out. Which pieces the city of Madras could could change. They chose to create a program that allowed affordable housing. With low system development charges, they actually suspended their system development charges for a certain amount of time on a lot of housing. And they started to get a lot more development. They looked at how they were using their funding through urban renewal in that case, so on and so forth. We looked at removing some important regulatory barriers, which were a big problem in Madras at the time.
Ms. Goodman, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I asked, and this isn't a surprise. I asked Kelly to forward you a message, but my, but just for the others edification. Some of the things that I've kind of read over the years about incentives and fee waivers and things like that for affordable housing. That I've heard about in Seattle Pearl District, things like that. They were given these incentives or reduced fees and all, and yet they. We did not end up getting affordable housing out of it, or we got, you know, two units and it was a drop in the bucket. And so what I want to make sure that we're front in front of us is, you know, as we talk about these. Realistically, how much of a sure deal are they for getting affordable housing? Versus how much is it a great deal for the developers and they're going to say, you know, it's a great, you know, they're they're all over it. Until the rubber hits the road. So that's kind of hate to be a little bit of a suspicious minds with Elvis, but that's. I think there's a lot of examples out there where it just hasn't gone the way we want and then the money's gone and the developers are gone and there you go.
So as I go through some of the examples, I'll talk about some of that. There's a lot to that. It's very complicated. So the range of potential strategies, I've got a slide about each of these. We've got about twenty minutes. And so you can help me get through them faster by asking questions where you really have important questions you want answered. Otherwise, we'll get stuck on some of the early ones and you won't get to where you'd like to get to. So I'm not going to read off all of these pieces. The ones in green are ones I'm going to hit on a little bit harder. So you'll see one of your favorite things, I'm sure, reduce parking requirements. That's a hard one for every city. The reason you might look at reducing parking requirements in certain instances ends up being about the cost of building parking. In general, around the Portland region, building structured parking is about forty five thousand dollars per space. And building underground parking is about sixty thousand dollars per space and those those numbers may be a little bit old. But it's somewhere in there. So let's just say that parking is very expensive. In Bend, for instance, what they did is they did parking reductions for affordable housing development. I think it's probably subsidized affordable housing development where they required one space per unit. Rather than say two point five spaces for two bedrooms or two spaces for three bedrooms. So they did very targeted reductions in a certain instance. So you might consider policies like that. When you're talking about regulated affordable housing or income restricted affordable housing. That is guaranteed to be affordable for at least a certain period of time. It ends up being very complicated what that certain period of time is. In a lot of cases, it ends up being fifty years and perhaps longer. So income restricted affordable housing generally has length of time it will be affordable attached to it. Looking at preserving your existing supply of affordable housing that can be regulated affordable housing. So housing that was built built with low income housing tax credits, that can also be something like. Like you're naturally a court of naturally occurring affordable housing. In a lot of ways, this is your biggest bang for your buck. Because the the dollars here are less for this kind of housing policy. So you're preserving what's already there and trying to preserve the level of affordability. So you might do things like rehabilitation or weatherization programs. That might be through, does Home Forward operate out in this part of Clackamas County? Okay, your housing authority essentially. Or your utility companies, they may already have weatherization programs. The city could develop a rehabilitation program where you give a low interest loan. Or you give in some cases grants for certain types of repairs. And in that case, the city develops the criteria at once. So it's usually income qualifying. And there may be some amount of time that you attach to the housing remaining affordable at some specific level. But remember that the city tracking housing remaining affordable, that's a pretty intense administrative task. Manufactured home preservation, I think a lot of us look at manufactured home parks. And say, yeah, they're affordable, but they're not pretty. But they're one of the only types of affordable ownership opportunities. In in Jackson County where literally thousands of manufactured homes burned up. Those cities, Talent and Phoenix are desperately looking for how do we get that kind of supply back? So looking at preservation of existing manufactured homes. You can also look at other incentives for preserve preservation. You can look at density bonuses, so for affordable housing. So you've got somebody who's proposing regulated affordable housing and you only allow three story. Could you in some cases allow four story for that? It's very much at the city's at the city's discretion with density bonuses. These are some of the kinds of regulations that can that can increase affordability. Decreasing street widths is not something I've seen many cities do recently. The cities who wanted to decrease their street widths have already done so. But if you imagine a bigger street means more land for the housing, that means automatically a little more expensive. Going on, increasing allowable housing types. And so this is at least partially the work of House Bill two thousand and one. I believe the city is working at meeting its House Bill two thousand and one requirements. Which are that duplexes are allowed in all residential zones. Well, are there other types of of the missing middle housing types? That the city could allow maybe outright instead of conditional use. Maybe allow in zones where it's not allowed. Cottage housing, townhomes. These are housing types that more cities are embracing. And what I'm expecting is more developers will be become familiar with developing them as they become more more common in Oregon. One of my coworkers refers to cottage housing as the kittens of a missing middle housing types. Because they they look so so nice and so cuddly. Can you consider allowing these housing types? Looking at pre-approved plan sets for accessory dwelling units and these middle housing types. If you have pre a plan, pre-approved plan sets, then of course it's less expensive for a developer to use those. Their their development process is going to be more certain and likely less costly. Allowing smaller tiny houses, those are typically in the one hundred to five hundred square foot range. Some communities are considering that. And then, of course, allowing multifamily housing in buildings in commercial areas without commercial uses. The importance of that potentially is is that commercial ground floor is more expensive to build. And if you do multifamily on the ground floor, then it's less expensive to build. All right, continuing on forward. Some of the concerns that cities have are managing short term rentals. What we suggest, if this is a concern for Sandy, is clearly define short term rentals in your code. What are they? They're typically rentals that last thirty days or fewer. And they the definition set should say, is a short term rental anything from renting out a single bedroom? Up to a single a whole house or is it only one of those kind of things? And then we suggest you require licenses with a small license fee. The reason we suggest that is that lets you know where the short term rentals are. Lets you know how many of them there are and facilitates collection of transient lodging taxes. In that way, if the community starts to have more problems with short term rental, short term rentals. You know clearly where they are and how many you have. When we were working with Hood River, they didn't have that information and it was really stymying the conversations. Other types of things that cities do might well be having policies that manage nuisance or quality of life issues. Like too much parking around short term rentals or having garbage cans out at the curb for too long. And then some communities choose to learn limit short term rentals and there's a lot of different ways to do that. But I recommend that you consider the role that short term rentals play in your economy, especially for tourism. All right, bombing on, here are some of the the more interesting ones. So looking at housing options and services to address and prevent homelessness. So again, remember that people who are. Have incomes of thirty percent of less of your median family income, to think was about twenty eight thousand dollars. Those folks are at risk of becoming homeless. The city could do things like work with your your housing authority and your other partners. On things like an emergency shelter in town. Work as a partner to support things like rapid rehousing, which is short term rental assistance with services. Permanent supportive housing development of that, which is again, long term housing and services. Things like transitional housing, which are things that are not a shelter but a room or apartment again with services. This isn't housing that somebody goes and builds and just leaves alone. It's housing that a nonprofit builds or a public agency builds with the intention of providing services to people who live there. Again, looking at housing and rehabilitation programs. Weatherization, homeownership programs, cities, some cities provide assistance to low income households. With with down payment assistance. And in that case, that ends up being less about the unit staying affordable. And more about the household who is income qualifying, having homeowner assistance. Some communities with large employers, employee assisted housing is something that I think is getting more discussed. So lowering development or operational costs. So cities can sometimes play an important role in parcel assembly. So the city buys land that a developer would have otherwise trouble buying. Depending on the housing type, the city could. Depending on the housing type, the city could sell the land to the developer for the cost of of buying it. Or the city was able to buy it for less than the developer could. So there is essentially very low cost to that. The city could also do what we've got here, a public disposition of land. Where the city looks at land it's owned or it's bought and works with, say, a nonprofit. Developer of affordable housing and says, you want to develop this housing, but you don't have land for it? What about this site? We'll give you the land or we'll sell it to you very cheap. It's an important role that cities can play in in affordable housing development. In that case, if you're working with, again, a developer of regulated affordable housing, income restricted affordable housing. That housing is going to stay affordable over the long term. Something like reducing or waiving system development charges, this is something that that city of Madras did. They've gone to a lot of trouble of tracking the units where they've waived the system development charges. And making sure that the owners don't sell the housing quickly. They bought it, they they had the SDC waiver, so they were able to develop less expensively. So they don't go ahead and resell that housing. It's a lot of admin to keep track of this, but it's something that that Madras has been doing and has been very successful at. And they also found some developers who are trying to game the system. And sell the housing at market rates rather than lower lower costs.
So was was ma- I'm sorry to interrupt, but was Madras dealing with the housing problem?
Yes, Madras had a very big housing problem. They had no development of housing or low development of housing for many years.
And so it was becoming an affordability issue?
It was becoming an affordability issue, but also just simply a lack of new housing development issue.
Interesting. Thank you.
Sure. And I'm sure that Nick's need with City of Madras would be happy to talk with with Kelly and his staff about this.
Well, yeah, now it's just as I've studied matters a little bit and they have a lot of amenities in their community that Sandy doesn't. And so in my head, I'm thinking I bet you they've got a lot more added on to some of those property taxes and stuff than Sandy does. That might, you know, cause some of those affordability issues. So this little thing I was playing around with in my head.
Interesting. There are much lower income community than than Sandy is.
Yep, thank you.
So you could set up a construction excise tax, which is fairly complicated. We don't have a lot of time to go into this. But a construction excise tax is something that for residential housing, it can be up to one percent of the permitted value. It doesn't have to be a full percent, it can be a fraction. Ben started off with a third of a percent. And the revenues from the construction excise tax, a little bit can go to administration of the tax. Fifty percent goes to developer incentives for developing affordable housing. Such as SDC waivers or tax abatements, which we'll talk about in a few moments. Another thirty five percent can be used in any flexible way for other affordable housing programs as the city chooses. And fifteen percent goes to OHCS, goes back to the state. You can also have a construction excise tax on commercial and industrial development. Where there's no cap and half would be used for housing related programs and half would be unrestricted. So there's ways to use construction excise tax in some flexible and creative ways for affordable housing. It depends on you having enough development to put enough money into into the construction excise tax for the tax to generate enough. It also depends on you working, in my opinion, it depends on you working with your developers. To gain support for a construction excise tax. The cities that I've seen who have been successful in that, Bend and Medford come right to mind, have done that. Going on to some other approaches, tax abatements. There's a number of tax abatements. The vertical housing tax abatement, that's not so much about affordable housing. That's more about getting mixed use multi story housing. The multiple unit limited tax exemption, that's something that ends up being more used generally to support workforce affordable housing. For instance, the city of Eugene uses it in their downtown. And where they've granted the multi unit limited tax exemption. They require a certain percentage of housing to be affordable at eighty percent or less of median family income. And they've got a whole other set of criteria. And of course, the affordability has to go at least as long as the tax exemption. And there may be other criteria for that. The other two tax exemptions are about low income housing development. And they apply to housing that's affordable at eighty percent of median family income or below. And they're going to stay affordable over the long run. You probably are a little familiar with urban renewal, you may be. Urban renewal is a great way where if you've got an urban renewal district. And you know that you need to build a certain amount of infrastructure to support development. You can use urban renewal for that. You can also use some amount of urban renewal to support affordable housing development.
Beth?
Yes.
One sec on the slide. So one thing I'd point counsel to is the vertical housing tax abatement. My understanding is is that can be had success with that with some mixed use stuff with commercial and and you know, with the apartments on top and stuff that they're able to bring the vertical housing tax abatement to bear on. So just something to kind of think about.
Oh, I I think it definitely has a role and it can be used with other incentives to support some amount of affordable housing development.
Yeah, thanks.
So then I have one last slide. I feel like I'm shoving many things down down your brains for consideration. So then also looking at housing equity. And so housing equity is considering the different roles. That historical discrimination and all of that played in creating what is inequitable housing system. When we did the regional housing needs analysis for Oregon Housing and Community Services. We documented in there in the metro region, the Portland metro region, which we defined as the three counties. So in that, in being in Clackamas County, you're you're in that area. When we look at cost burden, say for people, people of color or for Latinx population. Or people with a disability, people with limited English proficiency. All of these household, all of these groups are disproportionately cost burdened. They've got more cost burden than other groups. So looking at policies to explicitly make affirmatively furthering fair housing. A housing policy might be something you want to consider. And that could be things like education about fair housing for owners or managers, lenders, residents, city staff. Working with the Fair Housing Council of Oregon on doing outreach. There's a lot of different things. So there's all these policies about supporting housing equity. And councillor Walkers, it go back to your point. As you're developing a housing plan and looking at what your incentives should be or would be. You really do have to consider how are we going to make this? The public funds we're using, how are we going to make sure that they are used for affordable housing? That's not just, you know, affordable for one minute and then not affordable a little bit later. And in some cases, that's built into the into the incentive. And in some cases, it's something you have to look at and decide how much effort the city is willing to go to. To make sure that they remain affordable for at least some period of time. So that'll continue to be, I think, a point of ongoing discussion. And I feel bad because I've gone through all of these, but you don't have much time to ask me questions.
All right, any questions? Hi Kathleen, yeah.
I would just ask Ms. Goodman, you know, you've done a fantastic presentation and really given us a lot to think about. Of those different approaches and given the issue or the concern about trying to, like you said, make the goal of really making it long term affordable for the money or the incentives that we may end up using public funds for. What are the top, you know, couple of approaches that had that most kind of bang for the buck, I guess? Would you, could you kind of give us any thoughts on that?
Sure, I would look at partnerships with your with your housing developers. Your affordable housing developers and your housing authority to see what opportunities there are there. Oregon Housing and Community Services may well have funds that can be used in Sandy for development of income restricted affordable housing. Looking at things like a tax abatement, especially the tax abatements that are very flexible. That allow the city to decide when to grant the tax abatement or not, such as the multi unit tax abatement. That's one that that can certainly be useful and help you get some of the kind of housing you're looking for. Looking at, I I don't know if a construction excise tax is right for City of Sandy. I haven't looked at how much development you have going. If you don't have much development going, it's not going to be right. But evaluating that in your in your housing production strategy is something I would suggest. And then looking at your system development charges when you next do a review of system development charges. And determine if there's a way you can support developing affordable housing or types of housing that are more affordable. So those are the top things. And of course, the regulatory pieces.
Don, I see your hand up.
Thanks. Hey, I know we're short of time, but the question is, you know, I'm looking back to the city council policies from the past. And I'm looking through our last two year goals and I don't see anything around in talking about, you know, affordable housing. Did we miss something? Is this something we're just obligated to do as we get into the later discussions because of the the state? Or is this something that is important but not didn't make our top two year priority list?
Is that a question for council or to Beth?
Yeah, sorry, not Beth, but I'm just making that it's, yeah, Beth, you can't answer that. I apologize. But just an observation and we come back to it. I don't know.
Yeah, the one, I guess the only thing off the top of my head in response to that, Don, I would say is kind of that little timeline that that Kelly gave at the beginning, right, that we had just recently finished one. Then the county was doing one and now we're kind of up on one again. And so I think that we might have just been kind of in a weird step timing wise. But that's the only thing that can hit my head as you were talking. I see Lori has a hand up. Oh, go ahead, Kelly.
It's on the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty one council list of goals. I'm looking at it right now on our website. It's number nine, affordable housings. Study solutions create more affordable housing options.
We just, we didn't bring it forward essentially then.
Yeah, right. There you go. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Lori and then Kathleen, you're behind Lori in the queue. Lori, you're muted.
You know, now I have to hit too many buttons. I gotta lower my hand. I gotta unmute myself. It's getting too complicated.
There you go.
So this question actually, Beth, isn't for you, although I thank you for your presentation. That was fantastic. Kelly, or this might be for Shelley even. So I if memory serves me, when we talked about affordable housing in the past. You'd given us a percentage of what we had in that kind of low income bracket. Do you guys either one of you have any idea of what percentage of housing we currently have that meets that criteria?
I don't remember that per se. I think I think that one graphic that Beth shared, I believe that represented that unless I missed something.
I didn't remember seeing our the city of Sandy's actual percentage of low income. I remember seeing the number of people that met that were actual housing. I'm curious how much of our housing in the city of Sandy meets that low is in that low income requirement.
I think we'd have to do some research. I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Good enough. Thank you.
Kathleen, are you still up?
So yeah, we are, I think, I think we have, you know, a big lead on Portland in that we have already zoned a lot of areas for high density and medium density. And we're getting one hundred and thirty six apartments out of the Tickle Creek and the Double Creek things here in the next several months. And and more on the way, I think, after that. And so I feel like we do have some potential there to kind of address these more affordable housing issues as we need to do. And in areas that, you know, are already zoned for that, close to the shopping and the transit and things that really do benefit. And need that need. So I'm kind of excited about that, but there's maybe some additional things we can do working with these partners. And and bringing in some outside funds, grants, federal dollars and things like that to kind of help sweeten the pot. Thanks.
Thanks Kathleen. Carl, you're up and then Lori. Remember, guys, so we're at seven oh five now with a long meeting agenda ahead of us. Carl, you're muted. Go ahead.
Yeah, I can say that we did try several different options to make affordable housing work in Sandy. There's been some a number of different reasons why it didn't come to fruitation. Examples, but we've we've tried for the last several years to try to make this more of a part of Sandy. And then secondly, and if you want, I could tell you several on a conversation later on. But I they also can tell you that I've got several studies that show where our housing is in terms of this low and affordable level of houses. Some of that is pretty rough, though. It's really kind of kind of kind of housing that we really wouldn't put people in unless they had a lot of effort and money to put into it. But the people that are buying those houses are on the margins in terms of having money to be able to spend on those fixes. So it's kind of a worst case scenario on steroids.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a super quick comment. I just want to make sure that we don't get into a mindset of thinking that apartments are low income necessarily. So like Sandy Place Apartments are a great example. The rents for those places are higher than my mortgage, just an FYI. So just a quick comment.
Yeah, no, that's right. That's why homeownership is great, too. All right, with that, that's the end of our work session here. Let's go ahead and plan on kicking off our city council meeting at seven ten, just a short break, four minute break. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Great presentation.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Beth, if you're there. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, I'll go ahead and call this Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag, United States One Nation Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome, everybody. Um, Jeff, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Peitzel.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood. Councilor Sheldon. I think was here, may have stepped away for a moment.
There he is. He made it.
Councilor Walker. Councilor Exter.
Here.
Councilor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Polium.
Here. Thank you for that, Jeff. Uh, as always, I'm gonna go ahead and start with a quick review of tonight's agenda. I will look uh for any changes to the agenda. We'll then go to the public comment portion of our meeting. Do please note that there will be opportunities to offer testimony on the rogue fabrication zone change as well as House Bill two thousand one code amendments and the Title thirteen amendments later in the agenda. So if you would like to speak on any item that doesn't address those three items, our public comment portion will be your time uh to do that. Uh, we will then go to responses to the previous uh meetings, public comments from staff. I I don't believe we have any of those tonight. Um, I could be wrong, but off the top of my head, I don't think we do have a response. Um, then we have a presentation on grid resilience emergency management from Portland General Electric. We'll go to our consent agenda that has our Sandy City Council meeting minutes from our March eighth meeting as well as our pre-purchase equipment for the existing wastewater treatment plant condition assessment improvements project. We'll move forward into ordinances where we have a public hearing on that rogue fabrication zone change, the public hearing on the House Bill two thousand one code amendments, and then the public hearing amending Title thirteen of the Sandy uh municipal code. Uh, from there, under new business, we have the Tickle Creek Village Trail Easement Fee-in-Lu Proposal, contract approval, owner's representation services for the Phase one A wastewater systems improvements plant plans. We'll then go from the report to the city manager, committee and council reports. Then we'll have two executive sessions at the end of the meeting, and so I'll be going about around, oh, I don't know, two AM or so. We'll see how quick we get this thing through, folks. Uh, with that, I'll go ahead and look for any changes to the agenda. All right, see you in none. Let's go ahead and go to a public comment. Again, I'll note, if you'd like to give public comment for the uh uh, the rogue fabrication zone change, House Bill two thousand one code amendments and the Title thirteen amendments that's later in this agenda. At this time, council welcomes all any other comments on topics. Please see the instructions on our agenda, but if you are participating online, you can participate by clicking the raised hand button and then wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and then wait to be recognized. Please remember, state your name and address for the official record. Jeff, I'll go ahead and turn the meeting over to you.
Mayor, so I'll just wait for one moment for any raised hands. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands this evening.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Um, Jordan, was I correct? Is there no response to last meeting's public comments?
Uh, Mayor, we just had a one question that uh was around the Water Bureau and their project uh and a question if the city was um aware of the cost escalation of that project. And um, I think the short answer is yes, somewhat. Um, you know, we've been plugged into their their project um and aware of what's going on there. I think the cost escalation is related actually to something that we also uh are interested in, have a pending application with with, yeah. I think they cost uh costed out their full financing of forty years, and so that was a part of that uh formula, but this will be a topic as far as the bulk water purchase and the sources of water for the city at a work session coming up in May with our consultants.
All right. Thank you, Jordan. Um, with that, let's go ahead and move forward into our presentation on our grid resilience emergency management. Um, uh, Jordan, I think we have some guests here. Uh, would you like to introduce?
We do, and I think I'm gonna introduce Eric Underwood to do the full introductions. Eric is the local government affairs representative for PGE. Uh, and we're happy to have PG here tonight to to make a presentation to the city council about uh the resiliency and and their um plans. Um, and uh, yeah, uh, thank you for being here tonight, and Eric, I'll I'll hand it off to you.
Well, I know Eric Underwood, so welcome, Eric. Go ahead and unmute. Welcome.
Thank you all for that introduction. Hi, Mayor. Hi, Jordan. Um, I think Jeff is gonna bring up our our slide deck for us here.
Happy to. I'm just bringing it up right now.
While I was doing that, just uh just want to say good evening, uh Mayor Polium. Members of city council and city staff, uh, thanks for making time on your busy schedule and your busy agenda this uh evening uh for us to join you tonight. We really appreciate it. So I'm Eric Underwood, uh, your local government affairs contact at PGE, and it's really an honor to be here with you virtually. And we're very grateful for your time this evening. Uh, but before we get started, I wanted to first thank you for your support during this historic ice storm that we had last month. Uh, your partnership during the storm and the recovery effort uh is very much appreciated. Uh, joining me tonight are PGE's president and CEO Maria Pope, our director of wildfire mitigation and resiliency, Bill Messner, and our director of renewable operations, Nick Moose. Uh, Maria, Beck, Nick and Bill will provide you with a brief ice storm update, uh, speak about what we're doing uh to enhance resiliency for Sandy and the residents, and discuss our overall strategy around resiliency and emergency preparedness. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to our president and CEO, Maria Pope, uh, to talk a little bit about our community involvement with Sandy and some of our shared goals. Maria?
Great. Thank you, Eric, and thank you all for having us this evening. Do you want to move to the next slide if that's okay?
Oh, there. Oh, boy.
Let's see.
There we go.
There we go. Perfect. Thank you. Um, Mayor, council members, uh, I don't think I have to mention to you all, uh, the last twelve months have truly been historic. Uh, a few weeks ago, we experienced a one-and-forty ice storm that did devastating damage and caused more than half of our customers to lose power. Many individuals lost power more than once, in particular, many in your area. We restored power to over seven hundred and fifty thousand uh different outages for customers. Um, and just for perspective, we have about nine hundred thousand customers in total. So it it was really one of the largest restoration efforts we've ever seen in our history. Um, and and we'll spend some more time talking about that. But obviously, in the fall, we all experienced devastating wildfires, and you know, much of this is a direct result of our of our changing planet. Um, I want you to know how seriously we take restoring power. Uh, we understand uh the complications for everyone to be without electricity when they're working, learning, um, and relying on electricity uh for their livelihoods. Uh, but we also appreciate that it's triply difficult during the pandemic and has resulted in additional economic stress for customers, cities and communities. And we also, while we take our resi- our resiliency work very, very seriously, we also may take the affordability of electric service very seriously. Um, and it underscores our role as a central service provider. As we look to the future, we have three sort of main strategic areas of focus. The first one is to reduce the amount of carbon and our energy supply. We call that decarbonization. The next one is really around smart grid and expanding electrification, in particular around transportation, which we know is the largest source of carbon around there. And and we have um a lot of smart grid projects and others that will also enhance resiliency. Um, and then uh this, the last one is really around performing, making sure that we are doing the best for you that we possibly can day in and day out during super critical peak times, but also on blue-sky days. So uh from a, from a decarbonization standpoint, our goal is to reduce um our carbon emissions by eighty percent from two thousand and ten levels by two thousand twenty, uh thirty. Uh, and we are well on our way to meeting those goals. We also have net zero emission goals by two thousand and forty. Um, and in general, we're really looking to make sure that we transform our company to be focused on what customers want and how you want to use your electricity, um, how you want to look at the service, how you think about working with your utility provider. And we fully appreciate that more now than ever in our hundred-and-thirty-year history, we are relied upon for safe, reliable and affordable service. So with that, let me let uh make sure that you know that we're leveraging technology, we're strengthening our overall resilience reliability, being mindful to costs. Um, and Bill Messner and Nick Lewis are gonna talk to you more in detail about both the ice storm and uh the wildfire events, as well as the damage that was caused, and most importantly, what we've learned from these events and what we're doing uh to ensure a more resilient uh and improved service going forward. So on the next slide, we can turn to talk a little bit about partnerships, because um partnerships are really key. Uh, they're critical to how we look at everything in our industry. Uh, as you may have seen, a lot of different utility trucks were here during our ice storms as well as during the fires. We rely on mutual assistance, but we also are grateful for the partnerships that we have with your city and being able to work with you closely on resiliency uh as well as your climate goals. So thank you so much to your staff, uh, and I want to particularly call out Jordan Wheeler. Uh, we were able to work very closely with him during the wildfire events um of the of Labor Day. It was absolutely invaluable for us. So thank you. Um, I also want to tell you how excited we are to have collaborations underway with you, including reconductor project for the large-scale solar project that's happening in your area, as well as upcoming line work that will strengthen uh reliability. Um, I'm proud that we've been serving Sandy for more than a century, uh, and I'm honored that eleven thousand community members and four hundred and eighty thousand, excuse me, hundred businesses uh are all benefiting from the service that we bring to you, but we're also benefiting from your feedback. Um, we also are a large taxpayer in your community, and we are grateful for the leadership that you all have shown uh as you've steward its uh tremendous growth, uh, both in Sandy as all as well as in surrounding Clackamas County. We have a lot in common. Uh, we've been here for a long time. We're dedicated to our communities, to the community members that we serve. Um, and we very much appreciate um all your time this evening. So with that, let me turn it over uh to Bill Messner, uh, who will uh uh speak on our common goals. Bill?
Thank you. And uh, next slide, please. And like Maria and Eric said, it's very much an honor to be here, so thank you so much for having us. In this slide here, we'll do a deep dive into the ice event that Maria just mentioned. But it was a series of storms that came right after one another and uh with a lot of ice. And then this, you know, third bullet there is that we had up to an inch and a half of ice on ice on our lines. And so with all that extra weight and and the tree dan- and the trees, and we had, we sustained a lot of damage. And in particular, we were, you know, hard-hit in Clackamas, Marion and Yamhill counties. Some of the other aspects of that is that we worked very diligently to repair lines, but as soon as we repair one, then another tree would come down and and knock it out again. And so as Maria mentioned, you know, at our peak of our storm, we had about or we had a hundred, excuse me, four hundred and twenty thousand customers without power at one stage or another. But Maria mentioned that we restored power to seven hundred thousand uh customers. And so what that means is that we would store power, and that same customer may go out again, and we would have to send another crew or find where the damage happened again. So it was a very challenging event in that sense. Um, in the Mount Hood quarter itself, you know, we had very dangerous conditions in terms of not only trees and falling branches for crews, but you know, the ice on the roads for your community as well. Um, areas heavily impacted were Welch's, Brightwood, Dunn's Corner and Sandy, and the zigzag area of Welch's. Two hundred plus uh customers had extended outages. With all that being said, um, we're very proud of the crews that were able to respond in this time of need. At the peak of this event, we had over four hundred crews working twenty-four seven to restore power. And it's the largest amount of crews I that I know of in our history to help restore that. And it was crews from mutual aid crews, so um from as far as way of Montana to come and help our customers. Next slide, please. So with all that being said, I mean, that was a really traumatic event. It's like, well, how do we get better, right? And that's what this slide is about. So really here, you know, what do we learn from these emergencies, wildfires, as well as the ice storm? And you know, what are some of the highlights we can share with you? Well, we're developing and preparing, deploying different equipment standards, so um think uh cast iron utility poles versus wood poles in certain areas. Think tree wire versus just a regular wire that we would install. We're making, you know, a harder lean towards automation as well, so the smart grid can tell us when when there's an issue before there is an issue, and we can direct crews where they need to go to fix things faster and know what that damage is before they even get there, so they have all the right equipment. And that's the vision of the future. We're also enhancing our fitness program, which fitness is basically our inspection program. And so how do we get better at our inspections, seeing things and fixing them ahead of time? And you know, we are in a um hot wildfire risk area. We have enhanced inspections. We do that on an annual basis. We see things, identify things, and then we make a plan to fix those things before anything can go wrong. In addition to that, we have enhanced vegetation management. As you can clearly see from the ice storm, a lot of trees cause a lot of damage to our system. A lot of those trees are also off our ride-away easements, and so we have a lot of partnerships that we can work together on about how do we take care of those hazardous trees that are outside of our preview, but we can see that it could cause damage to our system. So there's some opportunities there for us to get better. Mount Hood corridor itself, in terms of, you know, what's looking ahead and some of the solutions. And we were looking to new solutions to address common problems in the area, fine-tuning adjustments in the vegetation management in the corridor, and we're looking for additional PSPS areas. So PSPS stands for Pub- Public Safety Power Shut-Off. That is what occurred in in the September timeframe, where we turned off power in the Mount Hood corridor area. And then after that wind event came through, we went back and saw a lot of damage caused to our equipment. So it was a very proactive way to make sure that we are not the source of admission. We're looking into segmenting our feeders, so we are very strategic about where we can do a power shut-off. So we're not just turning off a whole feeder where, you know, some of the the risk may not even be in that area. So think like a downtown city area or something. Why would we turn off power there when it's actually more on those lines that are going back into the to the woods or more tree uh risk? This way, we're also not trying to impact city services or traffic signals, for example. But all that is about partnering and also about partnering to figure out where we can find backup power options in our resiliency plants. And part of that really is about today's conversation, making sure that we develop that resiliency partnership. Next slide, please. Here, I just, Maria touched on a few of the things that we that we have experienced in the last six months. You know, we've had COVID, we've had a wildfire, and we had an ice storm. But our but our company plans for many emergencies that we could be facing. And so there is cybersecurity and physical security attacks that we need to prepare for and protect our customers' information and our assets. Cascadia earthquake, many experts say it's not about it, but when? I have a slide on that that we'll get to a little bit more. A couple of line mentions might be the next slide. And then there's also the resilient, uh, the regional grids. We are part of a grid that we that allows us to have operational efficiencies so we can move electrons across this region. But the the thing, same that we got to prepare for is that there could be a system that's upset outside of our state, that we got to be able to balance that as well. So we prepare for that type of emergency. And how do we do all this? Well, we have emergency planning. We do exercises. We are based in NANS, National Incident Management System, the same uh system that fire departments use. We have that common language. We do system improvements. Talked about all that redundancy already. We have redundant systems. One of the things we're doing right now is we're investing in what we call our Integrated Operations Center. It is a facility that will house all of our critical systems, in essence, but it is designed to withstand a Cascadia event, so we are, we'll be able to survive that event and be ready to stand up and recover as quickly as possible. All this comes down to strategic partnerships. It's a fed- All this comes down to strategic partnerships at the federal, state and local level. If we don't have those partnerships, we cannot be developing those partnerships in a time of crisis. We've got to have those partnerships up front so we can respond accordingly.
And Bill, before you turn to the next page, I'd like to just mention something. In that Bill not only coordinates across the entire West, but across the entire utility system. He's actually the chair of a group on wildfires that includes utilities from Australia as well as Southern California and Canada and almost every state across the West. And also participates in exercises with federal agencies, with many others. And is someone who has dedicated his life and his professional career to this sort of work. And we're very fortunate to have someone who really brings the best thinking across the country as well as globally to our utility and these solutions. Just this day, he was, he was talking to the head of the California Public Utility Commission. And we were all listening to really sobering things that we have to take very seriously as we think of our changing planet and providing reliable electricity going forward.
Thank you, Maria. With all that, we're trying to expedite our learning, right? So with all those working groups really sharing as a utility industry on how we all get better. And so we can bring those practices to our community very quickly. That is our goal. Next slide, please. So this is that Cascadia slide that I was referring to earlier. And I think it's just really important to, to point out that if this, when this event happens, we have, our communities have to be resilient. In the one chart there on the left hand side, left hand side of the slide, electricity, according to the state, it's going to take one to three months to restore power. Water, one to twelve months, depending on that event. And so I don't share this slide to scare anyone. I share this slide to say that, look, this is something that we have to help everybody be prepared for. In this event, it's a seven hundred mile fault line from Seattle to the border of California. We will need help from outside our service toward for us to recover. And but to do that, we have to be resilient because it's going to take some time for them to get to us. I'm sure all of you know about what happened in Puerto Rico and how that was a big effort that a lot of people needed to help in. This is that type of event, but much, much larger. And so your leadership in your communities, helping your citizens, your community members get prepared for this is really something we really want to partner on. I mentioned some of the other things on here already. Planning and training and that sort of thing. So I won't go into that. But I just really look forward to that partnership, continuing this conversation beyond today. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Nick Luce, who will talk a little bit about the wildfire experience that we had in September timeframe. Nick?
Thank you, Bill. Next slide, please. So these pictures show the before and after of the Riverside Fire looking downstream in the Clarkin River Basin up at the Oak Grove Powerhouse. Extremely devastating. The fire traveled seventy miles in five hours. With zero warning, we ultimately had to evacuate our hydro facilities and our operations. As a result of this fire, we're revisiting all of our fire risk models and assessments. What areas are more prone? What areas are hazards that we need to now consider? The Public Safety Power Shut Off, the P S P S that Bill mentioned, that was, we implemented that on Labor Day. This has impacted five thousand customers to the east of Sandy. And it was really around, it's a high fire risk. We were going to experience high winds. And so it was the right thing to do, but it's, you know, it's never been done before. So it's been a challenge. So working with local officials, government agencies to make sure that everybody understood why that was going to occur and how to best step through that. But most importantly, now that we've been through this devastating fire in the Riverside Fire, our normal day operations, what do we do differently now that we're seeing an increase in fires? So some of our reclosers, so these are devices that automatically close the line that re-energize. We turn those off. So we change some of our operations. We also turn off some of our work that we're doing up in the forest that has presence high risk during red flag warning days. So there's some things that we're doing internally to mitigate fire hazards. But these extreme conditions, the ice storms, the windstorms, the fires, they're increasing frequency and intensity. So that's really changing things for us. But our close, our close planning and coordination with our franchises, our partners, our cities, that's what's really key. As Bill mentioned, you can't form, you can't navigate a response when you're forming relationships during the crisis. So us having a partnership with the city of Sandy is very key. And will set us both up for success when we're trying to serve our customers that are in need. But with that, I appreciate the relationship and the partnership with the city of Sandy and want to turn it back over to Maria. Thank you.
Thank you. It is an absolute pleasure to be with you all today and to be able to share a little bit of what we do every day. We're honored to serve you. We're honored to make a difference in your communities. And I would think it'd be helpful if we could take some questions because it truly is through strong partnerships, ongoing work together that we will be able to continue to serve our customers, your community members, and make sure that we leave really a better world for our children and those who come after us. So I'm so pleased to hear how much Eric Underwood is clearly a part of your communities. And Mayor Pollan and the entire council staff, thank you again for allowing us to speak with you. We are, should we just open it up to questions? How would you like to proceed?
That'd be great. I see we already have one in the queue here from Counselor Don Hawkinson. Hawkinson, sorry, Don.
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, thanks for the presentation today. Very, very interesting to me. You mentioned that that was the first public safety power shutdown. I think that was the first one for the government camp Welch's area. Do you expect that we'll have to do more? And the second part of that is, was it successful? I mean, when you went in afterwards, did you discover situations that could have led to additional fires or things like that?
Sure. Let me have Bill take that question. Because, but one of the things I think is really important that we acknowledge, we shut off power in many other areas in conjunction with first responders and different energy or emergency management operating centers during the wildfires. It happened to be your area where we proactively turned off the power ourselves. So there's a fine nuance that I think sometimes we over index on as a utility. And so let me, I don't know, Bill or Nick, do you want to take that question?
Yeah, I'll go first, Nick, and then add to it as you wish. So we define an area based on what we do risk modeling. So we do a lot of risk modeling. Now was the quarter that we identified it. As Nick stated, I mean, we learned a lot from the last September event too. So right now we're evaluating, should we be expanding those zones to other areas in the state? So that was the first time we exercised it. And as far as I know, that's the first ones that have been exercised in the state of Oregon. California has been doing these. And so, you know, we brought it up here to California, excuse me, up to Oregon. So then, do I, will there be another one? I'm not sure, you know, one of your questions. And we base it on weather events, right? So if we saw another event like we did in September, then yes, there'll be another. We will look at it. It will inform our decision. We work with, it's not just us in the vacuum. We are working with agencies. We're taking weather data. We're looking at the fuel that's available when we're making those decisions. And then that's when we're exercising it.
So please note, we have a meteorologist on staff. So these are, we have very specific criteria.
Yep. And so, you know, having that, you know, and that allows us to make, you know, we're, we're not making this in, you know, just in time. We're being informed by the weather as it comes in. But to answer your question, yes, I could see these happening again in the future. The second part of your question was, you know, after the event, did you see damage? Yes, the crews went in and they repaired some damage. I don't, I won't speculate if fire or no fire, but I will say there was damage and we repaired things post the event.
So Nick was actually saw it firsthand. You know, I was up, you know, through the Highway twenty-six area all the way up to Welch's and whatnot. But why don't you talk a little bit about the damage that you saw on some of the side roads, particularly as they had a little bit over the hill?
Thank you, Maria.
It was huge.
As Bill and Maria both mentioned, you know, we had a hundred mile an hour winds. And so a lot of the service drops to houses, you know, limbs were down. So when we proactively shut down power, to be able to come back and restore power took a while. It took longer than we anticipated because there was so much damage and heavily forested area. You know, seeing that kind of wind speed is pretty devastating. So I think learning from that instance, because we've had wind speeds, you know, on par with that this winter, just kind of be able to go down and walk, the different, different part during the summertime is you have to put eyes on every service drop. Make sure that there's no limbs hanging on the line. So during the summertime, it takes, it takes longer. But we're seeing higher, more extreme weather than we've had in the past. And I expect to see a P S P S event again.
Thank you. Counselor Exner?
Yeah, a couple of things here. One, I wore my hand. Yeah, there it is. In the Sandy area, we had some really spectacular P G E folks doing work. And I want to just call out Paul Turner, who's a guy I know really well here in the city and trying to be careful here. But he worked to his tail off, him and his crew to make this stuff happen. I never lost a bit of electricity during all those storms. So I know there's several round that did, but you did a great job. So just give my hand clap for that.
No, no wonder, no wonder you say such nice things about this guy, Exner. Come on, man.
Well, he didn't show up at my house, but I saw his truck go by several times. But I do want to talk about though, in the face of climate changing and the need for making sure that we have a lot of our electricity consistent for all kinds of reasons, this last year is worth the time with our need for computers, internet and all the rest of things. So it's really crucial anymore. And it may be a while longer yet before we get past a lot of this. I'd like to talk, or maybe at least set up the message to be able to talk about more about how we manage our trees mixed in with our electrical lines. And I know we've had some conversations in the past, but the way we manage our trees and we can talk about as part of our staff, with your staff, be able to discuss things like tree limbing management, species changing, be able to replace trees that are, are going to be able to manage themselves underneath your power lines. Be able to give us a chance to have some of a tree city look as well. And I think there might be some real opportunities to talk about some of those things between our two different staffs. I know we've had some conversations in the past, but I think it would be well worth it. Because we, it sounds like your biggest problem is limbs, trees bouncing down off of those wires. And it's part of the Pacific Northwest is to have trees and power lines in the same space. But there ought to be some things we could do to help that out.
Council, that would be invaluable. Absolutely. The, if we can reduce the risk, we can enhance the reliability for customers. There's no question about it. And in all honesty, limbing trees sometimes actually is not beneficial at all. Because then you have the limb, other limbs, they're weaker. We all know how Douglas firs grow in this part of the world. And so if you take off a bunch of limbs, that actually weakens the tree and makes it more likely for other limbs to come into the power lines. So if there's a way that in, in areas that make sense, we can do more tree removal. And then in areas where you want to have trees, you have the trees that are the appropriate trees with power lines.
I think there's a lot of opportunity for conversations.
I think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity. We would really look, look, I can see Nick smiling. We can, this would, this would, this would be a real win-win. And my, what I like about it is that longer term will make our service to you more effective and more cost efficient. So it can, it can really be a win-win. And particularly in today's world where you have really high log prices. You know, there's, there's a return back to the stump for, for the owners of those trees. So that's another good one.
That's right. Thank you.
So what we'll do is we'll have Eric follow up with you. But please know that I've signed myself up to meet with your county on this topic almost monthly. So it's, this is a really important topic, particularly in an area like yours. And we have had great success working with the Forest Service, particularly as they've fully appreciate the increased risks as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go with Counselor Walker and then Pete Tull.
Hi, speaking of Forest Service, I worked with all your folks up at the Clackamas for twenty plus years on all the FERC relicensing. And I was just kind of curious about, you know, we depend a lot on the tourism overflow from the Clackamas River. And, and I know that you had a little bit of problems there at the Faraday. And I'm just curious whether or not, you know, how much of the additional facilities up there for you all at Frog Lake and some of those other places? Did you see a lot of damage up there? Are your, is your production kind of impacted by any of the damage up there? And is, you know, between Timothy Lake and Estacada, are things kind of back on track? And I know it's going to be a while till we get the highway and the whole corridor reopened, but I'm just curious about from a power standpoint.
So let me let Nick take that one because as you have probably worked with him a lot in the past, he ran those operations for years. One thing I want to make sure that you all are aware of, we have a lot of dead or dead and dying timbers. Much of it was completely burned and is dead. Some of it was partially burned and it's partially dead. But that, the standing dead logs or trees is really, it's a hazard for future fires. It results in logs going into the river. If nothing good comes of it, it actually makes forest restoration take a lot longer. So I just want to make sure that you all are aware that we're moving forward and actually accelerated the pace just today of our lot of logging operations in that area. So you will see many more log trucks pulling dead and dying wood out of that entire area. So I just want to make sure that you all are aware of that. Nick, how do you want to address the overall operations?
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question. The fire started up by Ripple Brook, went all the way, and then the spot fires all the way down to Faraday Powerhouse. And luckily, our infrastructure between North Fork and Faraday survived. But where the fire got really warm and really extreme was up by Oak Grove. So Oak Grove Powerhouse has been offline since that fire and is expected to come back this summer sometime. The fire went all the way up to basically Harriet Lake, not quite to Harriet Lake, but the base of the dam. So pretty devastating up further, up in the forest that we went. Right now, ODOT, if anybody's been up there, they're bucking trees along the road, taking on the hazard trees along the highway. And they're stacked and decked along the road. It's looking like it'll be a while before that opens up because of all the work activity. But Marie said there's log trucks by the dozens every half an hour going upriver right now.
And Council, we were just discussing water temperature and, and all of the issues. Because it's, it's not a question of if the fire's already come through. It's a question of, of how do we, how do we manage it? So this is going to be complicated. We look forward to working with you on.
Thank you. Counselor Pete Tull?
Yeah, thanks for coming and sharing. I appreciate it. In one of your slides there, and you were talking about is some of the resiliency of your grid and being able to shut some of this stuff off and the segmentation of your grid, which I'm glad to hear. Before the wildfires, and we can go back many years, but you know, we'll have areas here in town where something up, let's say Bornstead Road, a tree limb falls down across it, it shuts down. Not only that, but a quarter of our city's power because of that one feed that was going many miles outside of our, of our city itself. And it's really hard to explain to residents, the, the design. And I'm not, I'm not, I don't work for P G or the grid or anything like that. But just knowing a little bit about that, how much of that are we going to see in the future to be able to help on that resiliency, expanding the grid as a grid more like a web? And then also, the second question was with all these power solar farms that are basically going in and around Sandy, there's many of them and many more. We're expecting because it's a popular thing there. How much of that will help backfeed into the actual power that our community actually uses here in Sandy? And how would we explain that to our community when they see some of these very large solar farms around us? And, and how would we explain that to our community when they see some of these very large solar farms around us?
Yeah, I can, I can take a swing at this one. As far as the, for the solar farms, there's, you know, right now we're not using battery storage. And that would really be the game changer in this case. So right now they, they put electrons on the grid. And if there's no feeder available, if there's a substation available, doesn't do, doesn't do any good. So I'd say it actually adds complexity to the grid when, when there's no battery storage. As far as for feeder design, for more resilient redundant feeders, that's, we're on, we're doing that all the time to, and those upgrades. Can we feed it from a different substation? And, and we have a lot of investment that's in front of us for making more resilient grid for, so we don't cut off half of a city during an event like that. And Bill and Maria, do you like to add any of that?
Sure, let me, first of all, Council, your questions are really some of the most challenging issues that we face is utilities all across the country and particularly in the West. So you're, you're spot on. Being able to segment our service to smaller and smaller aspects is really important. It's not going to be done overnight, but it is a key area of focus for us. With regards to solar and, and issues, you know, it's one of those things, it's, it's like a great dinner. You know, you know, some is good, too much is a real problem. And, and so we've got it, we've, we've got to make sure that we have the usage within the area of the, of the constraints of the equipment. And, and also know that solar and/or even a battery in and of itself without appropriate backfeed connected to the entire utility grid won't work. And so I think a lot of people think that they're putting solar on their roof and that will make them very resilient or whatnot. You still need to have the entire grid system working for that system to be working. I think that's, that's something that we get a lot of calls because sometimes solar installers won't mention that to customers.
I think I was thinking of the ones on your house, but the 40 acres, you know, just east of us and other locations around of us that are 10, 20 acres of solar fields. So.
Yeah, I think what you, I think you'll begin to see, there's will still be some more of that. It probably will begin to taper off. They've become, it's become much more like other things that have spread it up. The early people got higher margins than, than those coming. So it's, it's marginally less profitable moving forward, which actually is good for all, for customers and whatnot in terms of the cost. I also would say that as people put all of this there, you know, as, as a community, you want to make sure solar panels is a hazardous waste when it gets, it needs to be taken care of as it's hauled away. So one of the things that I've speak to city councils in different parts of our service territory like Newburgh and others, they get very concerned sometimes if there isn't an ability for people to pull them out at the end of their lives.
Thank you. Counselor Hokinson. Dawn, you're muted.
I got the hand down too, but I buttons. I can't do it. Last question for me, on your emerging threat slide, you listed a number of threats, which I think are, you know, fairly universal. But one of the ones that's hit the news recently is about resource adequacy in the Northwest with retirement of coal. A lot of people don't think about it, but with all of our going green, we've, we've actually created a little short-term problem, short-term in the next few years. So what's the outlook for us? California brownouts in our future or we're going to make it?
So this is a really big deal. And this is a, it's a, it's one where we spend every day thinking about resource adequacy around the region. We, as, as a utility and as an entire region have been blessed with, you know, regionally, it's about 65% hydro. Portland General doesn't have quite so much. And so what we need to do is make sure that we're moving forward with what I call an all of above set of solutions. And, and please know that being reliable is really at the heart of being a regulated, integrated utility. So unlike Texas, as a regulated utility, we own a lot of our generation. We make sure that we can bring it in to you all to serve as our, our customers as well as others. We serve everyone in our communities. We don't pick and choose between customers. And so we take reliability very, very seriously. It's really at the heart of, of what we do as, as an industry and, and for Portland General in particular. We, you probably watched Sarah Edmonds, our colleague, speak on KGW the other day. She also, in addition to her role at the utility, leads the Northwest Power Pool, which we sort of set up with other utilities like ourselves, kind of an insurance pooling mechanism that we have among the Northwest. It's one of the oldest, most successful regional sharing programs. And then we also operate in an integrated grid. So right now we may have some extra hydro as the sun, the snow is beginning to melt a little bit on Mount Hood. And the fish like to run at the nighttime and that's the time when the wind's also blowing. So we may be sending power to California. But during the day when they have excess solar, we'll be bringing that in up here to lower cost. So we belong to a broader integrated grid. But this is going to be challenging. I don't want to, I don't want to say it's not. And it's really important that we all work collaboratively together. And I'm really honest about where we are and make sure we're doing the right things. Because at the end of the day, we, we need to make sure that we, too many people depend on electricity for their livelihoods, for their education, for everything these days. And so it's, it's very important. Great question.
Any other questions before we let Maria and her team go for the evening?
We've overstayed our welcome.
No, no.
So much time.
No, not at all. Hey, thank you so much. A great presentation and taking the time to answer all of our questions. Really appreciate it. You all have a wonderful evening. Okay?
You too. We look forward to following up with you on trees.
Yeah, thank you.
As well as anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. With that, let's move ahead with our consent agenda. Unless there's a discussion, I will look for a motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt the consent agenda, both items, right? Are we going with both items? Both items?
Yep, correct. Is there a second? I see a second from Counselor Smallwood. So I have a motion from Counselor Hokinson and a second from Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye, opposed, an a or a thumbs down. Motion carries on to ordinances. All right, hold on, I gotta find my right stuff here. So this is for Rogue Valley. All right. So please note that there is an opportunity for public testimony that will occur after the applicant presentation concludes. When the public testimony period begins to speak, if you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time to wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Speaker time limits will be up to 15 minutes for the applicant's presentation, up to three minutes for each audience member testifying in favor, against, or neutral, and up to 10 minutes for applicant's rebuttal. I will now open the public hearing for Oregon Land Use File Number 20-041ZC at 7:58 PM. I will call for any abstentions from the hearing body. I'm calling for any conflicts of interest. I will see the site that I do have a personal relationship with the applicant, but I, I can completely stay neutral on this, on this topic. I will poll the hearing body for any ex parte contact. Counselor Exner.
I visited the property and took a look around and did some walking and looking at the difference, visual parts.
Thank you. Any other ex parte contact? Mine does not qualify as ex parte contact, but before this was even a file, I did have a, about a five-minute conversation with the applicant. Very high level. With that, I will call for any challenges to members of the hearing body. To bring a challenge, if you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized.
And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right. Thank you. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later at any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by the close of the record or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues raising the, to the, relating to the proposed conditions of the approval with enough specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Is there a staff report? Shelley?
Hi, let me just share my screen while I'm getting that up. I hope you noticed that I changed the formatting of the staff report a little bit, just to try to call out some of the more important pieces in the review criteria. So I hope that was helpful. So we're talking about the, the zone change put in by the applicant who owns Rogue Fabrication. This site is about 1.69 acres. It's about 900 feet from highway 26 as measured on Google Earth. If you're coming in down 26 from the west and turn right on Champion Way, it's just on the corner past Industrial Way. The request is a type four zone change, which is why it's in front of city council tonight. Currently it's owned I1 Industrial Park and the applicant is requesting that it be rezoned to I2 or Light Industrial. It's important to note that this does not require a comprehensive plan change because it is, zone changes within industrial districts. And the comp plan does not differentiate between different kinds of industrial land uses. This is a current zoning map. You'll see the subject site outlined in red. So that light blue is I1 Industrial Park. That purple is I2 Light Industrial, which is what the applicant is wanting to rezone the site to. So you'll notice that there is some land around the subject site that is already zoned as I2. So this is pulled from the comp plan. I just wanted to share what the intent is between I1 and I2. So Industrial Park and Light Industrial. So Industrial Park is intended to, I'm not going to read this because all of you can read. Essentially, it's intended to look nice because it's intended to be visible from highway 26. So it has higher standards for architecture and landscaping. I2, on the other hand, is more for light and manufacturing and warehousing businesses. And the building design standards and the architectural requirements are less restrictive. But we do still require screening from view from any arterial streets or highways like highway 26 for any buildings that are in I2 areas. So the key that we're talking about here, the difference between the two are the architectural and building design requirements. So the review criteria found in chapter 1726 of Sandy's Development Code. That's the zone change or the zone zoning map amendment chapter are to determine the effects on city facilities and services, assure consistency with that chapter, assure consistency with the comprehensive plan, and then assure consistency with the statewide planning goals and any other policies or standards that have been adopted by city council. So I'm just going to go through each one of those review criteria. So the effects on city facilities and services, we looked at traffic. We had the applicant provide a traffic analysis, which was reviewed by a third-party traffic engineer. And what they found was that land uses in I2 zoned areas are actually anticipated to have a lower traffic volume than I1 land uses. That number is 456 fewer daily traffic trips. According to our Public Works Director, this zone change should not negatively impact any public facilities or create any service capacity shortfalls. And we are conditioning that with any development that happens on the site in the future, we will require extension of water and sanitary sewer. The second criteria is to assure consistency with that zoning map amendment chapter 1726. And those purposes are to maintain sound, stable, and desirable development in the city. After speaking with the applicant, staff determined that living wage industrial jobs on already zoned industrial land constitutes desirable development. The second purpose is to permit changes in the zoning district boundaries where appropriate. Like I said, this is 900 feet from highway 26 and it's zoned by a few other land uses and quite a few trees. And so given that distance from highway 26 and given that some of the other adjacent parcels have been zoned as I2, we recommend that that is appropriate and Planning Commission recommends that as well. The third purpose is to ensure zoning changes are consistent with the community's land use policies and goals. I'm going to go into a little further analysis of that in the next slide when I talk about the comprehensive plan. And finally, lessening the influence of private economic interests in the land use decision-making process. So even though obviously this application was initiated by a private economic interest, council is the ultimate decision-making body. And as we've already established, there are no conflicts of interest with the council making that decision. So the third review criterion is to assure consistency with the comprehensive plan. Goal one, with public involvement, we followed the state statutory requirements for involving the public, including notices and public hearings. Goal two, policy seven requires that any land use applications are consistent with the development code, which we've determined and Planning Commission recommends that it is in fact consistent with the development code. And then goal nine, which is our goal related to economic development, policy 36, talks about protecting industrial land for industrial use. And again, this isn't asking, the applicant is not requesting to change the designation from industrial to something else. It is protecting industrial land for an intended industrial use. And then finally, the fourth review criteria is related to statewide planning goals. So goal nine in the statewide planning goals is goals for economic development. As is talked about in the city's economic opportunity analysis, smaller manufacturing businesses are beneficial to Sandy. And that is what this applicant is proposing to put on the site is a small manufacturing business. And then goal 12 is applicable here that relates to transportation. Again, as I mentioned, on the city facilities review criterion, this proposed zoning of I2 would actually be anticipated to generate fewer trips based on reasonable worst-case scenario than if it were to remain zoned as I1. And then finally, we put a number of conditions for future development on this. It's, again, it's important to note that this is not a development review application. So we're not yet reviewing the actual structure that's going to be built on the site. We're just reviewing this zone change application. So one of the conditions eventually, once the lot is developed, is screening of the parking area or any storage with at least 20 feet of landscaping, sandy-style colors and features, including all the walls and any metal roofs. Design features consistent with those identified in the submitted elevations. Those obviously are not required for a zone change application, but the applicant did provide them to us. And I believe in his slides, he'll go into a little bit of detail of what those design features are. And then finally, we put in the condition that according to the comprehensive plans definition of I2 zoned areas, any development that happens on that site needs to have minimal noise, light, smoke, or odor, or any other pollutants impact coming from the land use on that site. The recommendation from Planning Commission, they forwarded a recommendation of approval seven to zero to city council.
All right. Thank you, Shelley. We're now ready for the applicant's presentation. You have up to 15 minutes and Jeff will provide you with a two-minute warning.
My name is Brian. Joey?
Yeah, go ahead and start, Ryan. That's fine.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to say a few comments and then Joey's going to take over after that. So what, what I basically wanted to say So what I basically wanted to say is that there's not very, there's almost no property available that's available for sale with R2 zoning. And I think Joey is going to probably talk about this a little bit, but with the R1s, I mean, excuse me, with the I-1 zoning, it's really intended for maybe smaller buildings that are commercial-type uses and of course, visible from Highway 26. This is a large, a lot larger manufacturing facility. Manufacturing isn't compatible with the design standards for the I-1 zoning. The buildings, the first building is going to be the southerly one. It's a 15,000 square feet area, and the building to the north, which will be built in the future, will be also 15,000 square feet. And I wanted to point out that this piece of property was created in 1999. And so that's been 23 years, or actually 22 years, that this property has been vacant. That's kind of a long time to wait for industrial use. So I think it's a good opportunity for the city to have this kind of use on the property. I wanted to show a couple of exhibits that Shelley could do that. One is I wanted to show Exhibit J. If you could do that.
Yeah, let me pull it up real quick.
Okay. Just want to show three quick exhibits.
Okay. I'm just going to need to scroll through it for a second.
Jeff, obviously reflect this on their time, please.
Yes.
Could you give me a title for which one Exhibit J is?
It's the site plan.
The site plan?
Yeah.
Well, if it's the site plan, I'll open it.
Oh, it's mine, Exhibit 7. Okay, maybe you could do that. You've done there. Okay, do that instead. Okay. Okay, there's the building. The southerly building is the one that's going to be built first. That's where the Rogue Manufacturing is going to be built. And then the the Phase 2 and Phase 3 will be built on a later date. And then could you go to Exhibit 8, which is the very next one?
Yeah. Is that the building perspective?
Yeah. Number eight. Right there, you got it. Yeah, okay, well, that's actually number nine, but, oh, excuse me, that is number eight. Yeah, this is what it'll look like from the intersection of the two main streets. As you can see, the building on the right side, which is further away, that's going to be the first phase. But the other one building is in the front, is that's what it looks like. Then go to the next exhibit, number nine. And that's what the first phase looks like. So that shows somewhat of the interior site. But we've looked at this, and we feel it's very compatible with the architecture in the city of Sandy. So that's basically all I have. Sandy, I think, addressed all the other issues. I could spend an hour talking about the other things, but I don't think anybody wants to hear them, so. Okay, Joey. Joey's the owner of Rogue Fabrication. So do you want to talk to Joey for a little bit?
Certainly. Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Shelley, as well. Can you guys hear me okay?
We hear you great.
Okay, awesome. So as Ryan said, I started Rogue Fabrication about 10 years ago. I'm going to try and share my screen. And there we go. Are you guys looking at a slide with the same picture that Ryan had? Shelley show you guys?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I don't have too many slides to go through, but I wanted to show you guys a little more detail of why Rogue Fabrication wants this zone change and why we feel it's actually a good thing for Sandy. So again, this is obviously the elevation view that Ryan showed you guys. There we go. I promised, just like Shelley promised, I'm not going to read the Sandy Development Code to you. I just wanted to show it in its full original text and highlight just one small piece of it. The Economic Opportunity Analysis that Sandy conducted resulted in them deciding that they have an advantage to provide small employment sites, which is under five acres, which of course this is, it's about 1.7 acres, for several uses. One of them is explicitly defined as small-scale manufacturing. Shelley mentioned this. I wanted to reiterate it. It's absolutely what we're doing verbatim. I mean, we are small-scale manufacturing, so that's really all I wanted to show. If you guys do want to read the city development code, we can leave it up, but I doubt you do. And if you want me to go back or forward in slides, let me know. In terms of why we want this change, Ryan said that we can't really accomplish the manufacturing in an I-1 zoning. I want to just show a little bit of why that's the case. So I-1 requires steep roofs. The problem with this is if you have a steep roof, steep pitched roof on top of a building that is of size and scale for manufacturing, we're talking 60 to 100 feet wide, it ends up 50 or 60 feet tall or more. That's not allowed in Oregon Building Code, so I-1 and manufacturing don't work well in that regard. The other thing is, the picture to the, on the top right here, shows just one piece of the Sandy Style Guide, and there's a bunch of elements discussed there. I just wanted to show the multi-building appearance and what the wall would look like. I sketched the wall in blue there. If you guys can see my mouse, I'm moving over it now. I don't know if you can see my mouse. That wall would not make the factory shown below able to be accomplished. You would not have straight walkways. You would not have the overhead plumbing, air lines, other safety aspects, visibility, lighting, and a sensible layout. All these things that make manufacturing both safe and efficient. Efficiency, of course, is a good segue into economics. Do you guys have anything else on this slide or kind of on?
We're good.
All needed. Never mind. So the economic impact, I wanted to bring this up because Shelley showed some of the goals and criteria. Most of those evaluation criteria were based on either city or local resources and economics. So if this is I-2 zoning, we can move forward and do this development. It's not really sensible under I-1, but if we forced it through and decided to do it anyway with multiple small buildings, the manufacturing capacity would be greatly diminished. This would, of course, compromise many of the living wage jobs that this development plans to bring to Sandy. And I wanted to let you guys know that we don't just say living wage jobs because it's something fun. I actually did research and looked up what a living wage job is according to MIT in our area. It's a little bit under $19 an hour, just the wage part. Not only is the average wages excluding the owner's salary over $19 an hour at Rogue Fabrication right now, but we also provide an extremely comprehensive benefits package, including a company-sponsored 401K and other stuff. I'm not trying to hire you guys. I won't read the whole thing to you, but these are true living wage jobs. Manufacturing pays well, so it's a definitely jobs you want to bring to the town you live in. Shelley alluded to this. This is not a design review. Analyzing all these elements on this building and picking them apart is really for design review, but I wanted to show this slide. Brian already showed it to you, but we're not pursuing going to, we being Rogue Fabrication, pursuing an I-2 zoning on this parcel so that we can build a flat-roof, sugar cube, dingy factory. These pictures are what I paid someone to draw for me. They do incorporate all the elements, the heavy stone, stone facades, the timbers, the trusses, multiple colors, split-up elements, retail-sized windows on the first floor, all these beautifications that really make it look right in Sandy. So that's why I put this slide up, was to show you guys that Rogue Fabrication is committed to making a beautiful structure. And keep in mind, Shelley said that screening is required with landscaping. We just showed that in these pictures as flat green space. Obviously, there'd be trees, but we wanted to show the building, so the trees are omitted. So wrapping this up, if you guys allow Rogue Fabrication to change the zoning of this plot from I-1 to I-2, it will result in drastically less traffic, many more living wage jobs being brought to Sandy than an I-1 use, and true economic exports at the city, county, and state level. Rogue Fabrication sells nearly all of its products outside of the state, so this is a good thing, because it takes money in Oregon that would normally be outside of Oregon. So that's definitely a good thing for Oregon and of course for Sandy. And as a longtime Sandy resident, I wanted to mention to you guys that I drive Sandy every day. I know what it looks like. I know how beautiful it is, and we are committed to not taking away from the beautification of the town that we live in. So I'm humbly asking for City Council's vote of yes, so that we can bring the right jobs and the right development to our town.
Thank you. Very much appreciate the presentation. At this time, it's for public testimony. Guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us, and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called four and three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. A reminder, if you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial *9 to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I will now call on any testimony in favor of the proposal. Please remember to state your name and mailing address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes. Jeff will provide you with a 20-second warning. Jeff, do we have anyone?
Mayor, I'll just take a look at the list. And I do not see any raised hands.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. I'm now calling for testimony against the proposal. Another reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. You will have up to three minutes, and Jeff will give you a 20-second warning. Jeff?
And I do not see any raised hands.
All right, it's time for neutral testimony. These are general comments, neither for nor against the proposal. Still got to say your name and mailing address for the record. You still only have three minutes, and Jeff will still give you that 20-second warning.
And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
No one took advantage. So now we're calling for the staff report and recommendation.
Nothing to review on that unless Kelly has anything to add.
I just wanted to say that it's been fantastic to work with Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Gambino, and I hope that you guys approve this, and I hope it's unanimous. To me, it's kind of the exact thing we want to bring to our town that we all live in and enjoy is living wage jobs, manufacturing nonetheless. And as I said at the Planning Commission hearing a few months ago, is that please just remember that we will have 120 new commercial acres of land to be developed in the near future to the north side of Highway 26 across from Fred Meyer. So just because this few acres is potentially going to a higher industrial use that is light industrial, I think it benefits the community, and I think overall, it's a solid proposal.
Yeah, what Kelly said. You have a staff, a unanimous staff recommendation and a unanimous Planning Commission recommendation to vote in approval of this.
All right, thank you. Well, Joey, Ryan, do we have a rebuttal to all that testimony? Are these questions for the staff report? Okay, so let's just go to applicant rebuttal at this time. Is there a rebuttal or closing statement?
I don't have a rebuttal, just a very brief comment that I've enjoyed working with the city so far. In my dealings with other counties and cities, this has been favorable. That's all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, so are there final counsel questions for the applicant before I call for a motion to close the public hearing? Otherwise, I will take a motion to close the public hearing. I see. Counselor Petezel?
I move that we close the public hearing, but I do see a couple of hands up, so.
I do see some hands. I saw Counselor Walker.
Hi, I don't really have any questions. I assume that the proposal is going to go forward the way it was set forth, and I'm thrilled to see this. I'm thrilled the fact that you came down off the Margaret Road and found this property. It's been wanting to be developed for a long time. We are desperately in need of manufacturing jobs. There's so much potential for partnerships. The design of the building is very much in keeping with the adjacent fuel service building, the public workshop, and the movie theater, so it's just a win-win for everybody, and I really thank you for, you know, working with the staff and the work that the staff did to try to make this really work for you and for everybody. So thank you very much. I'm really excited about it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Are there comments, questions, or a second to Counselor Petezel's motion? I see a second from Counselor Smallwood. So let's proceed. All those in those were, I lost my place. Those are motions to close the public hearing. So all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed or thumbs down, nay or thumbs down, motion carries. All right, so now we are to discussion. Counselor Petezel?
It's fun to fight over who's going to discuss first. You know, I guess that says that's a lot about the proposal, right? So I might get emotional, right, because it's been on a long time. It's great to see this property developed. I'm going to say a lot of things here. Keep it short because it's a long meeting, but I want to encourage other people to do in what I see in this proposal coming forward. And that is, you know, some of us have been here almost 20 years, working with the city in different designs, and yes, there hasn't been anything here. I've seen a lot of people trying to make this I-1 and all the areas around it, so I'm super excited to see it go the other direction. For that, love the proposal. Been wanting this for a very long time. Sandy needs this plus more of this in some of the other adjacent areas, so hopefully maybe others will be encouraged to see what this proposal is bringing. The I-2 and I-3 districts is where living wage jobs really come from, and a lot more of them. And we talk about that all the time, but this is some of the the things that will bring that to it. Not only that, just bringing manufacturing in different ways from some of our other amenities that can take, you know, bring up sanding, is the type of fiber can bring in a lot of great different manufacturing plants. And we're not talking, you know, 50,000 square foot or whatever, 100,000 square foot manufacturing. We're talking really down-to-home, community-based businesses. So thank you very much for this proposal, and I look forward to voting on this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smallwood?
Well, I just wanted to say real quick, Joey, thanks for bringing such a great proposal to the council. One, and two, I'm not really sure where we're going to land lifelike because you're taking our landing zone. That's kind of supposed to be a little funny, just a little bit.
Flat roof.
Yeah, Mayor, if there's no other discussion from the council, I'm ready to make a motion.
Awesome, let's take it.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the project and change the zoning from the, to I-2.
I see. And most of Counselor Smallwood, a second from Counselor Walker. All those in favor?
Point of order, Mayor.
Yep.
Do we need to approve the first reading?
It's an ordinance, Mayor.
Oh, I apologize, Counselor.
I got a little excited.
So let's call for the first reading.
Okay, so this is Ordinance 2021-04, an ordinance amending the city of Sandy's zoning map by changing the zoning map designation for 1.69 acres.
All right, now I have a most, do I need a motion to adopt the first reading, correct? Counselor Smallwood, you in?
Sure, I'd like to make a
Feeling for that second, Walker. All right, we got a motion for by Counselor Smallwood and a second by Counselor Walker to adopt the first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye. Nay, opposed, nay, or thumbs down? All right, first reading passes. Jeff, let's go to the second reading, Shelley.
Yes, Mayor, this is Ordinance 2021-04, an Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance 2021-04, an ordinance amending the city of Sandy's zoning map by changing the zoning map designation for 1.69 acres.
Before I take a motion, Kelly, did you have something? Oh, Kelly, don't be slowing down my medium, man. All right. Counselor Exner?
I move that we approve the second reading.
And I'll second that.
All right. Got a motion by Counselor Exner, a second by Counselor Petezel to adopt the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Give me a thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, nay, or thumbs down? Motion carries. I just would like to speak out and say awesome project as well. Just second all the comments that were said. It's going to be awesome for our community. It was a very well-laid-out presentation, and I think this is the kind of stuff we get when our community works hand and glove with staff like that, and I think it was great. Kelly?
I just wanted to say, because we kind of forgot to say this sometimes, is that the ordinance becomes effective 30 days from tonight, just so the applicant knows, and will be notified in DLCD later this week, because that's part of the process as well. And if you have any other questions, please contact Shelley.
Outstanding. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the next public hearing. Find that script now. Hold on. It's for House Bill 2001. Think this is the right one. All right. This is a public hearing, right, Jeff? This is the right script?
That's correct.
All right. Instructions. Please note, the opportunity to offer public testimony will occur after the staff report concludes. When public testimony period begins, another reminder that if you're participating online, to click the raised hand button at the appropriate time. Wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial *9 to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Please also note that this is a, these words, preliminary hearing, to gather public input and consider any suggested modifications to the proposed code amendments. Ordinance passage is not expected at this meeting. We'll have up to three minutes for each audience member testifying in favor, against, or neutral. I will now open the public hearing for State Land Use File 20-032 DCA at 8:33 PM. Is there any abstentions from the hearing body? See none? Are there any conflicts of interest from the hearing body? See none? Let's go ahead and go to the staff report. Hello, Emily. Welcome.
Thanks. So I'm actually going to introduce Sean Edging. He's a housing policy analyst from the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, and we invited him here tonight to give a brief overview of House Bill 2001, kind of set the stage, give some context. So he's going to do that first, and then I will dive into the more specifics of each of our, each of the chapters that have code changes, and then some of the discretionary items that we can discuss. But I will turn it over to Sean for now.
Sounds great. Thanks, Emily. So I do have a presentation. Am I able to share my screen?
Yes, you are.
Looks like I'm able to. That's great. Well, then let me just pull that up really quickly. All right. Are you folks seeing that? All right. Well, then I'll get started. So thank you, Emily, for that introduction. My name is Sean Edging. As mentioned, Housing Policy Analyst here at the Department of Land Conservation and Development. I've had the pleasure of working with both Emily and Kelly on kind of these series of code amendments. They reached out kind of early and often to me to kind of work through some of the issues that they've raised to develop kind of a compliance set of codes to present to you all here today, and they've done a really good job at that. They asked me to kind of take a few minutes at the beginning of this to provide you all some context on House Bill 2001, like what are the kind of main requirements, things like that. So that's what we'll be diving into a little bit today. So House Bill 2001 is, let's see, yes, is one of kind of two major bills that was passed during the 2019 legislative session related to housing. So House Bill 2001 is the bill that's kind of made a lot of the headlines. It's the middle housing bill that kind of re-legalizes a lot of different middle housing types through...
We'll go ahead and give it just a little bit of time here, folks. We'll wait it out. Jeffrey, is he on a time limit? Can you pause that time just?
It's the staff report, Mayor, so.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Why don't we, I'll stop his screen share for a moment and see if we can...
Should have had Sandy that.
Requiring all presenters have to do it within city limits.
Well, let's see. It looks like he's coming back.
I apologize. I don't know what happened, but...
No problem. Welcome back, sir.
I'll just continue. Yeah. Thanks for your patience. So as I was kind of saying, so as a, I guess, you know, just an administrator or somebody who doesn't work very closely in the legislative process, sometimes we shy away from talking about the why a bill is happening, and we end up kind of talking at length about the what that's happening. And I think that in this context, specifically for House Bill 2001, that kind of does it disservice, right? Obviously, I can't speak to, say, the legislative intent of this bill in terms of, you know, fully understanding why the bill's happening. It's really a question for your legislators, but I do think that almost like a speed limit regulation, if you don't really understand why that this law is moving forward or the historical context that surrounds it, it doesn't make sense in terms of its implementation. So I wanted to take a few minutes to kind of talk about that history, recognizing that, you know, we have limited time here today. I know you guys have already a lot on your agenda, so I'll try to keep it brief, though I won't be able to do it justice in 15 minutes. So the first thing, to kind of rewind in time a little bit, when we're talking about House Bill 2001, we're referring to, or we're talking about, a housing type referred to as middle housing. Sometimes it's called the missing middle. It's kind of like a popular name for it. The, what middle housing includes are housing types that kind of exist between two pretty extreme spectrums that we often kind of think about housing under, on one end being single-family detached dwellings, and then on the other end being multifamily apartments. Because in a lot of communities, those are the only two things that are really built. And the reality is that there's actually quite a big diversity of housing types that exists out there. Middle housing encompasses a lot of these housing types between those two extremes. And one thing I kind of wanted to talk about a little bit is that there seems to be sometimes a misunderstanding about the origins of middle housing, thinking that it's kind of like a new thing that's coming up, and that it's going to be changing what might have been traditional single-family zoning. And the thing I kind of wanted to talk about is that historically, middle housing was actually a lot more prevalent, something that was allowed outright in single-family neighborhoods. Well, in that there weren't actually really zoning regulations that prevented people from, say, building a single-family home or building a duplex if they wanted to, that type of thing. The reality is that the concept of the single-family exclusionary zone, so a zone that only allows for the development of single-family homes, is actually a relatively modern invention. It came up around kind of the middle of the 20th century. And there's kind of an important historical context that I think we need to talk about, because without it, it kind of doesn't make sense why this kind of shift happened. So the big thing that we're kind of coming, that I've been learning a lot about as a planner, somebody who's kind of studied a lot of historical housing issues, is as you look kind of back in time around the era when the single-family zone was becoming kind of predominant in local jurisdictions across the United States, it was kind of going hand-in-hand with a variety of other policies that sought to enforce patterns of racial and economic segregation in communities. This was a time when there used to be much more explicit kind of, you know, racial zoning ordinances that would kind of, that were being struck down in the courts as unconstitutional. And around this time is when a lot more policies were geared around essentially kind of dividing various people of racial and economic backgrounds into categories of being, you know, single-family homeowners, or being somebody who lives in essentially a multifamily apartment. And then they regulated those uses. There's kind of a lot of examples in history. One of the most kind of infamous is actually right up here in this screen. It's referred to as residential redlining. It's a practice that was employed by the federal government, kind of with the rise of the Federal Housing Administration, where they would essentially not guarantee mortgages in areas that were often like low-income, areas that were predominantly black, places like that. So, you know, as you kind of go back, you see a lot of examples of this in our history, and it has the tendency to kind of reinforce these patterns on bases that are very much connected to racial and economic factors. So with that kind of historic context in mind, let's fast forward to today. I think it's uncontroversial to say that we're in a pretty full-blown statewide housing crisis, and that's not just, you know, kind of urban areas of the Portland metro. That's really statewide, and especially with a lot of the things that are happening right now with COVID and wildfires, this is being exacerbated, and almost every community in the state is starting to feel this pain. But one thing that I think we're starting to find as we look into these housing issues more in detail is that these are falling very disproportionately on low-income communities, communities of color. They're also falling on other kind of federal protected classes, like people with disabilities, things like that. And so we're really starting to think, we need to address this issue, because it's not just that housing is becoming expensive and out of reach for multiple people. It's becoming a very significant equity concern as well. It's creating a lot of these disparate impacts. And in the context of House Bill 2001, one of the biggest challenges that we kind of face, or one of the issues that we face that House Bill 2001 seeks to address, is the fact that in most communities in Oregon, actually more or less all communities in Oregon, when you look at all of our residential lands that we have available, the vast majority of them are zoned for exclusionary single-family use. And this is very important, because it really limits the amount of housing choice that we have in our communities. I apologize that I have a picture of Portland up here on the screen. I really wish I had one of these for every city, but even in a place like Portland, which you think of as being very urban and very dense, has roughly 77% of its lands locked up into single-family homes, meaning that essentially in anywhere in that area, you can only build single-family detached dwellings. This has an effect of kind of constraining the amount of housing that we can build within our cities, and has in part exacerbated this crisis and made it a lot harder for a lot of people to find housing that is adequate and affordable to them. So House Bill 2001 obviously is not the silver bullet or the solution to this, but it sought to at least begin addressing this issue by taking a closer look at our single-family zones around the state. So more specifically, there's these kind of two major requirements to kind of re-enable or re-legalize these kind of historic middle housing types, including duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. For the purposes of this presentation, I'm only going to be focusing on duplexes, because that is the only requirement for the city of Sandy. It gets a lot more in-depth, technical, and complex with these higher-middle housing types, but we don't have to talk about that tonight. The primary requirement for the city of Sandy and other cities that are above 10,000 in population is they have to essentially re-enable or re-legalize the development of duplexes on each lot or parcel that allows for the development of detached, single-family dwelling. And one thing I think that's kind of important to note there is this isn't a requirement for that property owner to build a duplex. It's just giving them the option when they have a lot, whether they would want to put a single-family home on it, whether they would, you know, might have a single-family home and want to convert it to a duplex, or convert it to a single-family home in an ADU. It just provides them more options and flexibility with how they use their land. And so to kind of conceptualize this, this doesn't mean that duplexes are going to be built on every lot or parcel. One of the biggest things, provisions that's in this bill, is it allows cities to regulate the siting and design, what's called the siting and design, of middle housing, provided that those regulations do not result in unreasonable cost or delay, or cause them to essentially not comply with the law or the provisions of the law. And the way that's kind of operationalized is our agency, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, as well as our commission, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, were directed to develop two types of documents. One is a model code, and the other is administrative rules, which outline kind of the minimum compliance standards for, you know, complying with the bill. So the model code is intended to function as kind of a best-practice document. It outlines a series of development standards that can apply essentially in any community, and they can apply directly for the development of duplexes if a developer comes into a planning counter and wants to build one. So it's intended to kind of be an off-the-shelf code that cities can work and implement and judge duplex development via. But it also serves kind of a secondary function, too. So cities are required to kind of amend their development codes to allow for the development of duplexes by a specific date. For cities above 10,000, that's June 30th of 2021. That's June 30th of this year. And cities that don't do that have the regulatory consequence of the model code applying directly to the development of duplexes in applicable areas, so single-family neighborhoods. So there's kind of a dual purpose there. One is as a model, a best-practice resource that cities can use, and then the others as a regulatory tool. Now, to give jurisdictions more options than what is in the model code, right, because it's a very specific set of standards, the administrative rules define a range of standards that jurisdictions can apply to the development of duplexes. So, you know, related to things like setbacks, related to how much of the building it can cover, things like that, all of these are kind of defined in administrative rule to provide a spectrum of options that local jurisdictions can consider when they're developing duplex code amendments. And so kind of framed another way, a colleague of mine developed this minimal graphic. So at the top, we have these administrative rules, and what these rules do is they set out the spectrum of kind of reasonable siting and design standards. And then the model code is a subset of that, that is more narrow and has a specific focus, which is kind of as a regulatory document. And so with that in mind, your staff, the city of Sandy staff, Kelly and Emily, have been working for a while now on developing code amendments that allow for the development of duplexes in alignment with House Bill 2001. They've reached out to me several months ago to kind of work through issues that they were raising and identifying, and asked for interpretations of various, you know, administrative rules. And, you know, one thing I just kind of wanted to say before I handed it off to them to talk about the details is they've done a fantastic job. I've really enjoyed working with both Kelly and Emily on this project. They've been, yeah, just very receptive and very, very great to work with, and I think their code is, very much reflects that. So I think with that, I'll hand it back over to Emily.
Great. Thanks so much, Sean. So I will stare at my screen now and dive into the presentation. I wanted to make it shorter, but there are 10 code sections that we need to go through that have modifications in them. So it will take a bit, and then I'm going to focus at the end on the discretionary items. These are the ones where we can actually kind of make decisions. When I go through each code section, they'll be broken down, like they were in the staff report, into those that are legislatively required, those that are administrative, that's just things that kind of clear up processes that we're already doing, and then the discretionary items. And again, we'll kind of focus on those at the end. Just to reiterate, the primary goal here is to amend our development code to bring it into compliance with House Bill 2001. As Sean mentioned, House Bill 2001 requires medium-sized cities to allow attached duplexes anywhere a detached, single-family residence is allowed, and it prevents cities from applying more restrictive development standards to duplexes than what we apply to single-family residences. So this includes things like design standards, parking requirements, and density thresholds. House Bill 2001 also prevents cities from applying minimum parking standards and owner occupancy requirements to ADUs. So you'll see these main ideas reflected in all the code changes. Hopefully, we've caught them all at this point. We did identify some since the planning commission meeting. So some of these items are, we don't have a planning commission recommendation on, because they were identified after. So starting with chapter 1710, which is our definitions chapter, we have two proposed changes in there. They're both discretionary, so we'll come back to these again at the end. But the first one is that we clarified the definition of accessory dwelling unit to allow both an ADU, to allow an ADU on the same lot as a duplex and not just a single-family residence. And then in conjunction with that, if you make the assumption that an ADU and a duplex are on the same lot, we clarified the definition of multifamily dwellings, which is under our building types in the definitions chapter, to specify that an ADU... To specify that an ADU duplex on the same lot are not considered multifamily for the purposes of the multifamily design standards in section seventeen ninety one sixty. Which are more intended to for like a multifamily apartment dwelling. In chapter seventeen thirty, which is the overall zoning districts there include density calculation. We added a clause stating that duplexes shall be counted the same as a single family residence for the purpose of calculating density. And this is required legislatively. The changes in chapter seventeen thirty four, which is the single family residential zone are also all legislatively required. We had a duplex as a primary use permitted outright. This is kind of the main, the main thing. All of our other residential zones already allowed duplexes. A single family residential was the only ones, Andy, that didn't. So this is now, duplex is now a primary use permitted outright. And then it gets removed from the minor conditional use list. And then there are a couple of references that were just a single detached dwelling. And those were under minimum lot area and minimum average lot width. So those were amended to read single detached dwelling or duplex. So again, legislatively required. In chapter seventeen forty six, which is our village commercial zone. Another legislatively required change is we revised the residential primary uses permitted outright to include duplexes above, beside or behind a commercial business. Currently it just read as single family residential or single family residence. So we had to change that to include duplexes. Chapter seventeen fifty four, which is the specific area plan overlay. This is also where our bornstead village overlay is contained within the code. There were two legislatively required changes. There's a table in section seventeen fifty four eighty. This is within the bornstead village overlay. That includes all the development standards for that overlay. And we had to update that to treat duplexes the same as single family residences. And then there's also a section that refers to private drives. We updated that to just refer to chapter seventeen one hundred, which I'll go over in a few more chapters. And just to treat the private drives for duplexes, the same as single family residential. And then there is one administrative change in chin. So we just added duplexes to the single family residential design standards. And then reference chapter seventeen ninety, just to kind of streamline it. And that's just to reflect how we currently review it. It just wasn't clearly stated in there. Chapter seventeen seventy four, which is the accessory chapter. These changes were focused in the accessory dwelling unit section, the ADU section. Again, mostly legislatively required. So we updated, updated the off street parking standard for an ADU to be no minimum. That is requirement of hospital two thousand one. We deleted the text related to ADU occupancy limitations. And then we revised the ADU design standards and additional requirements to be clear and objective. The one discretionary item which we'll talk in, again, in more depth at the end is a proposal to increase the maximum square footage of an ADU to eight hundred square feet. It's currently set at six hundred in our code. Chapter seventeen eighty two, transit streets. This one emerged based on a specific pre-application meeting we held. So this is one of the ones that kind of popped up later. And so on the legislatively required side, we exempted a single family residence that's converted to a duplex on a flag lot where the driveway approach to the flagpole is on a transit street and a lot doesn't have additional frontage on a second transit street. From the standards in section seventeen eighty two twenty B and C, and these are about front door orientation and a direct pedestrian connection. This is a very, very specific instance, but it did pop up at a pre-app meeting. So it is included in these code changes. To reflect that, the discretionary side of this is that we also are recommending exempting a single family residential and duplexes. So not just the conversion, we're just recommending exempting them on their own in this one specific instance. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in the discretionary section. Chapter seventeen eighty six, which is parkland open space. So these, these changes are more administrative in nature with a little bit of discretionary in there that we'll talk about again. But we clarified the parkland fee and the calculation for duplexes and then conversions that add additional units. And in this case, the discretionary component is that we assign, so when you have a required parkland dedication calculation at the bottom there, it's proposed units times a persons per unit. And then times point zero zero four three, which is the per person parkland dedication factor. And there's a table in that code section that includes the persons per unit. For a single family residence, it's three. Currently, we just treated duplexes to single family residences. But the discretionary element here is we have assigned the total since per unit as two for each duplex dwelling. So it actually makes the, the entire duplex would be four in this case. Chapter seventeen ninety eight, parking loading access. There are quite a few changes in this one. This is the first of two slides. So these two are legislatively required. We reduced the minimum number of required off street parking spaces for duplexes to be one per dwelling unit or two total. And that's to match the two, the two required parking space minimum for a single family residential. Again, that's legislatively required. We also revised the code language that the driver requirement for duplex is the same as that for a single family residence. And a couple more legislatively required changes to the parking chapter. We also revised the residential on-street parking requirement to be the same for a duplex as for a single family residence. And then exempted ADUs and the conversion of a single residence to a duplex from the on-street parking standard. The, there's one administrative change. We did also add family to the exemption list for the on-street parking standard. It was never intended to apply, but the code is not super clearly written. It's not clearly stated that multifamily is exempted. So we just added that in since we are exempting the ADUs and the conversion to duplex as well. And then chapter seventeen one hundred, which is land division. In this, in this chapter, there's a section on private drives. And so we revised that, that residential shared private drive language to reference the required off-street parking spaces rather than dwelling units so that this single family residences. So currently our code limits off-street private drives can only serve two dwelling units. But then that doesn't address, that doesn't treat a duplex the same as single family. So instead it's changed now to four required off-street parking spaces. And now I'll go a little bit into the discretionary discussion topics. These are the items that we'd really like your feedback on tonight. Planning Commission gave us feedback on, on most of them. Again, there were a couple that have come up since then. But these are, these are the items that we can actually have some discretion on. They aren't legislatively required. So the first is allowing both an ADU and a duplex on the same lot. So House Bill two thousand and one doesn't require a city to both a duplex and an ADU on the same lot, but we, we can if we, if we choose to. Planning Commission did recommend allowing a duplex and an ADU on the same lot. And so that's why that definition of ADU in chapter seventeen ten was updated. Kind of tied to that is that second piece. So if we do allow ADU and a duplex on a single lot. There would be three units which would technically qualify as multifamily based on our code. And so we were proposing that we would update the definition of multifamily to exempt an ADU and a duplex on the same lot from the multifamily design standards in section seventeen ninety one sixty, which again are more geared towards like a larger apartment building. So this was something we identified after the planning commission hearings. We don't have a planning commission recommendation on that piece of it. The second piece. So detached duplexes and middle housing, this is another thing. We have some discretion on. So House Bill two thousand and one requires cities to allow attached duplexes wherever detached, single family residences are allowed. But it doesn't require detached duplexes. Our current code allows both attached and detached where singer, single family residential is allowed. Except in the single family residential zone, which right now does not allow duplexes, but after these changes. It will allow duplexes outright in that zone. So we have the discretion to allow both detached or attached, detached and attached duplexes in that single family residential zone. We also have discretion to allow additional middle housing options like triplexes, fourplexes and cottage clusters. So planning commission recommended that we continue to allow both attached and detached duplexes in any zone that permits single family residences, but they didn't make a specific recommendation to allow additional middle housing types in zones that don't currently allow them. And I just included a couple images here just showing, you know, a detached duplex versus attached and then the miniages sort of identifies those missing middle housing types that Sean was talking about. And in the bottom are some of those examples of, you know, triplex or fourplex and then those cottage clusters, which also came up in our work session this evening. So this is, we could, we could allow these in addition, if that's the direction that council wants to go. So another, another item we have discretion on is the parking layout. So House Bill two thousand and one does not allow a city to require more off-street parking spaces for a duplex than for a single family residence. So that means that the maximum number of off-street parking spaces for a duplex is two total. Currently our code is two per unit, but that would not be allowed. We can though require a specific layout for these spaces. So we could require them to be side by side and not tandem. Planning Commission did not make any recommendations regarding the layout. This is just, you know, a quick image about side by side versus tandem. Side by side would potentially allow, you know, ma- make it so that there could be one parking spot per duplex unit, whereas tandem, it might be more complicated for people to figure that out. I should note that we are setting the minimum required. That does not mean that a developer couldn't provide more. This is just that we can't require more. So sign standards, I think this will hopefully be a very straightforward one. So House Bill two thousand and one doesn't allow a city to apply more restrictive design standards to a duplex than to a single residential. But it also doesn't require a city to apply design standards to duplexes at all. Currently, our code applies the same design standards to single family residential and duplexes. And that's in section seventeen ninety one fifty, which is our residential design standards. And that is in compliance with House Bill two thousand and one. We also clarified that section in the bornstead village overlay so that the design standards for the BVO will apply to both single family residential and duplexes. Planning Commission, hopefully, obviously did not recommend removing design standards from duplexes. They did review those code changes to chapter seventeen fifty four as we identified those after the hearing. Increasing the ADU square footage is another discretionary item. It's not required by House Bill two thousand and one, but we are recommending increasing the maximum square ADU from six hundred to eight hundred square feet. And that may indirectly support House Bill two thousand and one by encouraging more people to build ADUs. We have heard that six hundred is a little on the small end. The planning commission did recommend to increase that maximum square footage up to eight hundred. So this is the flag lot transit street requirements. So conversion of a, a single family residential to a duplex on a flag law on a transit street with our current code would trigger additional requirements, as I mentioned before, orienting the front door of the new dwelling to the transit street and then having a direct sidewalk connection. So we had proposed exempting conversion of a single family residential to a duplex from these standards and that would be required by House Bill two thousand and one. But in addition, we're also recommending just exempting single family residential and duplexes, like new newly built ones, not the conversion from the standards that would not be required by House Bill two thousand and one, but we think it makes sense. These are very unique situations, though one has come up, actually two have come up fairly recently. Our current code would require a separate pedestrian walkway. And we think that might be a little redundant to have that adjacent to a paved flag. And then also we'd increase impervious surface. So the planning committees recommended keeping these exemptions as proposed by staff. It did include kind of an image of one of the ones, this is what kind of triggered this code change or identified that we needed to update it. This was a pre-application meeting on the flag lot outlined in red. Where they wanted to convert that single family home to a duplex would have triggered the requirements of seventeen eighty two, which would have meant that that second new dwelling would had to have a front door facing Lingan Sand there with a direct pedestrian connection down that flag. So we are recommending exempt, exempting that type of situation. Hazard areas is another one. So previously, what we brought to Plan Commission included some changes to chapter seventeen sixty as well. Since then, we learned that there actually is an exemption in House Bill two thousand and one. There's an exception to the middle housing requirements for areas that are subject to natural hazards, which includes flood hazards and other hazards like slope or landslide. We have one chapter, chapter seventeen sixty, that has our flood and slope hazard overlay. So based on that exemption, we don't need to to modify that chapter, provided that our ordinance includes findings related to that hazard which we've included in the findings. Well, we do not recommend broadening the permitted uses in the FSH overlay area. And so we did not propose changes to chapter seventeen sixty tonight. And this exemption was identified after the planning commission hearing. So we don't have a direct recommendation from them. So the parkland SDC, this one is a little bit complicated. So as we, as Sean mentioned, and as we've kind of talked in the work session earlier today. House Bill two thousand and one requires local governments to consider ways to increase the affordability of middle housing. And it specifically includes considerations related to system development charges, property tax exemptions and construction taxes. But at this point, cities are not required to adopt those policies. So currently the city's calculation, the calculation for the city's land, land component portion of the parks SDC. Which is the fee and low option is in the development code in chapter seventeen eighty six. Currently a duplex would fall under the single family residential row of the parkland calculation table. But that was not actually clearly stated in the code. So we added a duplex row to the parkland calculation table and then we assigned it a slightly reduced person per unit, as I mentioned before. Of two per duplex unit, so four total for the duplex. Single family residential is three. So that's sort of the more discretionary item, though eventually it will likely be required to reduce, reduce it. The planning commission didn't review the proposed changes as they're identified after the hearing. And then this is, this came up in the last slide and again, has come up multiple times tonight. So again, we do need to require, or we do need to consider ways to increase affordability of middle housing. Again, the three specific ways we need to consider at this point are system, the SDC's property tax exemptions and construction taxes. We will need to adopt some of these strategies in the future. So we did hire Echo Northwest and this, this original presentation was going to be a couple of weeks ago. And so the Echo Northwest housing strategies was going to be a few weeks after that, but conveniently it was now tonight. So you've already kind of heard all of that. That's sort of the first step in the process of kind of exploring those strategies to address housing needs. And last slide, so our recommendation is to hold the public hearing, take testimony tonight and then provide feedback to us on the discretionary items so that we can come back with revised code language and ordinance and findings at an April or May city council meeting. We recommend that the code changes are adopted prior to June so that we're in compliance with House Bill two thousand and one. If we don't adopt code changes with an effective date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty one or earlier than that, the model code, which is included in the packet will go into effect in Sandy on July first, twenty twenty one. And I think Kelly has something to add.
I was just going to say, good job to Sean and Emily. It's a lot to take in. Believe me, it's been a huge task for staff. We, we originally could have went for a grant to help with assisting this. We thought it was going to be a small undertaking. I think Emily and I regret not going after the grant at this point. One thing I would recommend maybe is to open it up for public testimony tonight. Depending on how council's feeling, I know you have a lot of other items tonight still and then executive sessions. What we could do alternatively than getting all your feedback tonight, we've built in a little What we could do alternatively than getting all your feedback tonight, we've built in a little cushion, Emily and I have. So we could come back in April with just a discussion on all the discretionary items to give us feedback and direction, and then come back in May with all of that adopted and incorporated into the code and the ordinance ready for your adoption that night. So we can do it a first and second reading thirty days before the end of June. Because I do, I do think it's going to be a lot to go through all tonight, especially since you just heard the presentations from Sean and Emily. I think it's going to make the night that much longer. So I, I would just encourage you to think about that as a potential solution for moving forward.
Thank you, Kelly. Well, I mean, the, the next thing I'm to do here would be to go to public testimony. So I, I see no reason not to, I guess. Yeah, let's do it. All right. All right, guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it's sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us. And the staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Now calling on testimony in favor of the proposal. Reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Jeff, will you have one hand? And go ahead and click the button to allow this person to speak. And please state your name and address for the record. Three minutes, I'll let you know, and there are about twenty seconds remaining. Go ahead.
Clarify some, Jeff. I was just going to say, since it's a legislative hearing, you guys can just ask for testimony. You don't have to go through all the different proponent.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate that. Let's go and start the public testimony. Three minutes. Hello, Roseanne.
Hi, thank you. This is Roseanne Johnson with the Home Builders Association for Metro Portland. I live in southeast Portland and our offices are in Lake Oswego, unincorporated, Coquettius County. HBA supports the staff work on duplexes to comply with House Bill 2001. We also support the Planning Commission recommendation to continue to allow both attached and detached duplexes in all zones that permit single-family detached homes and to allow ADUs to increase by the two hundred square foot allotment. And also to allow a duplex and an ADU on the same lot. This latter option is very feasible to exempt from multifamily given two attached units plus a separate unit would not trigger the commercial building code, whereas reattach does. In addition, HBA encourages the city to treat two attached townhomes in the same way it does duplexes in this proposed set of code amendments. This change would allow two attached townhomes as a primary use permitted outright and remove it as a conditional use in the same zone that duplexes are allowed, that is the SFR zone. House Bill 2001 defines a townhome as an attached dwelling unit on its own lot. From the street side and the rear, two attached townhomes look exactly the same as a duplex structure. No one, not you nor I, can tell the difference. And I spent five years developing these type of housing products with my small family business in Portland. So I speak from experience. The only difference is that duplexes are on one lot, whereas two attached townhomes, townhomes, excuse me, are on two separate lots. In other words, fee simple homeownership. You hear my toddler crying in the background. Maybe you do. Duplexes, so both encourage, these, both of these products encourage homeownership, but duplexes are a more niche buyer, for a more niche buyer, because they would need to qualify for financing as a small, say, mom and pop investor or as a dweller in one side of the duplex while renting out the other. Whereas townhomes can be bought and sold individually, you know, and allowing for households that can attain the smaller housing type of a townhome compared to a single-family detached dwelling. I don't know how much time I have left. Can you give me?
Thirty seconds left.
Thank you. So for many years, as Sean, Ed Jane and Beth Goodman earlier today so aptly described, single-family zoning has been used as a tool to unwittingly or wittingly exclude certain types of households or certain demographics, socioeconomic status households from, from certain neighborhoods, unfortunately. So when that was used
Thank you.
Since the fifties, we have a great opportunity in Oregon with landmark legislation such as House Bill 2001 to apply.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, Jeff, further testimony in favor of, in favor.
Okay, Mayor, so we'll just take a look at the list here.
Reminder, just to dial star, raise, just raise hand or via telephone dial star nine.
Okay, Mayor, I don't see any other raised hands.
All right, we're moving forward. I'm calling for testimony against the proposal. Another reminder, state that name and mailing address for the record. You'll be provided three minutes. Jeff, let's do a twenty-second more.
Okay. And Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right, last chance. This is for neutral testimony. These are general comments, neither for nor against the proposal. And you still will need to state your name and mailing and address for the record. You also have three minutes.
And Mayor, I don't see any other raised hands.
All right, great. Thank you. Well, I guess Emily, let's do the staff recap. And I think we're not looking to do anything tonight, so probably no recommendation tonight.
Um, yeah, I guess I would say if you're not going to give us feedback on the discretionary items tonight, I would encourage you to ask Sean any questions you might have of him while he's here.
Great, thank you. So is there any questions for staff, Counselor Exner or Sean? Sorry. Yeah, Counselor Exner, you're up. Yeah, sorry.
It's Sean, so.
Yeah.
Changed my name. Missed that part. Yeah, I was thinking about putting all these particular dupes, ADUs, tries and so on into the same piece of property and lot. There were some standards about setbacks that I guess I'd like to hear what those standards are, if they've been changed at all, to be able to allow how close to property lines adjacent to, if it's detached, how, what are you thinking it would be separated from the other detached? Those are questions I don't know, but I saw anything in any of the staff presentations. So I guess I would like to see that as the, to now and the next meeting.
Yeah, so I can't, I can't speak. Oh, I apologize.
I know, you go for it first.
Yeah, I, I suppose I, I do not see, or I have not seen a kind of like specific proposal for detached duplexes. It's something you can consider and you are permitted to allow kind of internal setbacks to do that. The city of St. Helens kind of has a unique or a good approach where they have a just interior setback for any two dwelling units on a lot that kind of just apply uniformly. I thought that was a pretty good model. But for setbacks in general, it's, the duplex requirement is very fortunate in that we have the standards that apply to a single-family detached dwelling to, to base them off of due to the legislation requiring it on each lot or parcel that allows for the development of a detached, single-family dwelling. And so for a duplex, essentially the same setbacks that would apply to a single-family dwelling can apply to that duplex as well.
Yeah, I, I, so a year ago, I put together a, a sale for a detached duplex and the mortgage company were very concerned about being too much or not enough distance between the two different buildings as we sold them separately. So I guess there are some outside thoughts about what would be reasonable and what would not be. So I have some more thinking about that one. And by the way, this is a lot of discretionary items here. So this is going to take a more than a little bit of thinking to make sure that we don't have anything we've forgotten, added to, analyze as we go along. So appreciate all of the details that are happening here.
Can I, can I add on to your question there? I don't know if we got a chance to fully answer it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so the setbacks are going to be the same regardless of whether it's a duplex or an SFR, a single-family residential home. So if the lot's too small and you can't come up with a building design that can accommodate a duplex, it's probably going to be an SFR. It's going to be a single-family home design, most likely. That being said, I think it would be pretty easy to accommodate a duplex if you want an under-over house design or some other creative solution. The only thing I can say for the detached duplex, we already allow it in the code and we have a few of them around town. You just have to meet state building codes, which is a six-foot fire separation. Or, or the walls have to be built to such a standard to hold more than a one-hour fire. So it can definitely be done. It's just you have to do it within state building code provisions.
Okay, all right, thanks. For the moment, that's it. There just, there's a lot of stuff here to look at. And also, Mayor, I'd like to be able to say, can we keep the public input open until the next meeting?
Yes.
I suspect there's going to be a lot of people, once they start hearing some of this stuff, that they'll want to comment, since we got very few tonight.
Yep, one hundred percent. Thanks, Counselor Exner. Counselor Walker and then Counselor Pete Sold, you're next in the queue.
So this is kind of, I really appreciate all the work that has gone into this by Sean and Emily. It's a huge amount of analysis and Kelly, I really do appreciate it. The thing, I've kind of been studying this for a while with House Bill 2001. And honestly, the House Bill 2001 was designed and intended to fix the huge problem in Portland. And it probably addressed some issues in Lake Oswego and Westland and places like that where, you know, they're not all about the multifamily. But I'm, I've been reading the urbanization study that was done here in Sandy in two thousand fifteen. And some, some real key numbers kind of come to mind. And I'd like the council, council to kind of grab a pen and write a couple of numbers down here. That urbanization study says that thirty-one point two percent of our land will be developed as multifamily. It says about forty-eight percent of our areas' land already do allow duplexes. So what this is proposing with, you know, what we've been given, you know, so, so this whole idea that we need to have middle housing, Sandy already zoned and is developing for middle housing. We're just developing apartments, townhomes, row houses, duplexes, all those, you know, small detached lots, small attached lots, all that stuff. We're already doing that. And so this idea that we have a big problem that we need to fix is really a bunch of hooey, in my opinion. So what this is proposing is that it's going to allow duplexes and possibly triplexes on a hundred percent of our land. Because like I said, they're already allowed in R1, low density, medium density and high density. And so now it's going to be allowed everywhere. And again, we already have zone for these areas. So that is a real concern to me that, first of all, that the state legislature is kind of, you know, doing land use legislation, you know, for fixing problems like Portland and applying them as if we had the problem that was in Portland. That's frustrating. I get that some of this can't be, you know, that we're stuck with it for now. And I think that, I think there is some interest in trying to possibly in the future, look at some exceptions to some cities that already do have the range of zoning that we need to have. We need to have apartments. We need to have multifamily and all that. One of the things that we do have that didn't really get portrayed here in this whole discussion is that we do have the ability to change our base, you know, like our minimum lot size or our, the, you know, the, the bill just says that we can't make duplexes have, have more parking than SFR. But, you know, we have a current condition for two parking lots, two parking spaces for SFR. Most houses have a two-car garage and a two, you know, a driveway that allows, you know, so actually, they're actually providing four cars. So we do have the ability or the decision space here, I think, to kind of relook at some of the numbers we have here. And if in fact, we're going to have to, you know, we're, we're saying we're going to apply, there's going to be no more single-family, that now we're going to be having duplexes and possibly triplexes in a hundred percent of our land, that's a huge change. And it's a real concern for me. And I really think that we need to kind of be looking at these other options that we have to, you know, first of all, that discretionary stuff about, you know, adding, allowing an ADU and a duplex. I don't agree with that and I don't, I think we do have the option of kind of, again, widening that decision space a little bit and possibly increase, you know, because, because they've been so prescriptive and said we can't require any additional parking. Well, you know, over SFR, but we do have the potential to increase the amount of parking that we have for SFR in a way that doesn't add any additional cost, because the SFR folks are already giving us four spots. So I think that that decision space is something that we need to kind of be looking at a little bit, because I'm just really concerned that, yeah, we, we aren't going to have a balance of, you know, of low, medium and high, we're going to have everything as high. And as we know, there's a big demand for people moving out of Portland and all these other areas to have some SFR, to be able to kind of, in that little diagram Beth showed us, to kind of go from a, you know, apartment or townhome to a single-family residential. And when, when we've allowed ADUs and duplexes to be on those properties, especially as, you know, a detached duplex or is, is basically two small houses. So, you know, let's not kid ourselves. That's, those are two small house lots. And so I'm just really concerned that we have lost all ability to have any kind of balance in here as, as regards our, our zoning and our, you know, and, and providing kind of a range of lot sizes. So thanks, that's, I'll probably come up with more next meeting, but, and maybe in between, I'll try to kind of throw some more. I have a series of questions here, but I'll kind of send those off. They're already done. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate those comments. I also noticed that they only seem to have a map of Portland.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting, isn't it? Yeah.
It's all Stan.
That's right. That's right. Sure does. Counselor Pete Sold and then Exner.
Yeah, thank you. I'll try to be quick here. Yeah, I, you know, I totally understand what you're saying, Kathleen. One reason why I got on the Planning Commission so many years ago was because I was like, this is what I want in our city. And to move around and move up and then realize that the state law has dictated, we can't do that or can't do this or that. But I think there is some, some things in our comp plan as we go forward with our comp plan that we can address some of those things. I think you brought some of those up, Kathleen, as well. But anyways, we'll go for that. Quickly, detached duplex, I've never heard the term detached duplex. And I think I know what the answer is. That's just two houses on one tax lot, I'm guessing. But I just want to make sure, because I don't know, I'm, I have always thought of it as always being attached, you know. So that was a new term for me. So I'm seeing head shaking from everyone. That's an agreement. That's okay. Thank you. There was a comment you made, Emily, on that park, I believe it was the Parkland, would be reduced to three in the calculation for three. And then you said that that might have to change in the future, but we'll deal with it then. Like maybe the state would require us to change that back to two. Is that what I got out of that comment? Or I didn't want to interrupt you through your, your slideshow presentation. But instead of having it before, it was going to be three, but we may have to reduce that. Is that what you said?
Well, yeah, Sean may be able to elaborate a little bit. But so right now, we just have to think about strategies, one of which would be like the SDC reduction. So our, our SDC for parks is kind of different than a lot of other cities in that we have, it's separated out. And so we have the Parkland is within our development code in that chapter seventeen eighty-six. Right now, we would treat a duplex as two single-family residential. So it actually totals six as that person's per unit factor. We were, we were proposing to treat a duplex at a slightly reduced rate, assuming that the number of people in the, each unit of the duplex might be on average less than the entire single-family residence. And so we are proposing to a person's per unit factor of two, which would be four total, instead of currently it's at six total. But in the future with House Bill 2003, we may need to actually, I think, revisit looking at SDCs and whether we are treating duplexes separately or differently than and whether we are treating duplexes separately or differently than single family residences. I don't know, Sean, if you could add anything to that?
Yeah, actually, you're kind of touching on a pretty nuanced topic, which was, you know, we, we have a bill that's kind of requiring the legalization of all these new housing types, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, et cetera, et cetera. And we know that most cities in the state calculate infrastructure or like say system development charges, things like that, generally on a per unit basis, which has a tendency to charge, say, a quadplex roughly four times the amount what you would charge a, a single family detached dwelling, even though we, more or less, it does not have four times the impact that a single family detached home does. So we know that there is a, a kind of a recognition that, you know, local jurisdictions, they have their SDCs that, that currently exist. It'd be far too much to ask them to say, hey, now you need to recalibrate how you completely approach infrastructure planning. But we also know that it's one of the biggest barriers and kind of outstanding questions of housing legalization is the fact that we have kind of a way of planning for infrastructure that really incentivizes and kind of subsidizes the development of very infrastructure inefficient housing types and, and really discourages the development of smaller and more affordable housing. So it's, it's something that we recognized as a problem, but we also didn't, in, in, you know, working through this, we felt at the agency that it would be unreasonable to require jurisdictions to fully retool their SDCs approach. So that's, that's why that asterisk is kind of there.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm concerned about it because there is a, an additional burden on our infrastructure when you think of parks or, you know, streets or other things like that because we have more people using that and now the city is going to have to subsidize it in other ways, which we don't have. We just can't raise our mileage rate for taxing people on that. So anyways, concern of mine, but I guess we don't also get to, we don't, aren't making the rules in some of these. They're making them for us. The other thing I just want to point out was the timing for this to have two readings. So I want to make sure that Kelly and Emily, that we're thinking about that when it comes to June, because we're going to have to have two readings, correct? On this. And it only goes through if it has a unanimous vote. So I would make sure that we don't just assume that it will be unanimous a vote and that we'll have the two readings because we need to have the second reading plus the 30 days, I believe, before June 30th. So just something to keep in mind, unless I'm totally off based on that.
I mean, my, I would propose to do it by emergency if we get in that situation.
Okay.
I don't know what David would recommend, though. I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, I would, I would just say if you find yourself up against that, that deadline, that would always be an option. I think it'd be nice to not have to do that for a variety of reasons, but if you found yourself there, that would be a possibility.
Thank you. Let's go to Counselor Hokinson, then Exner, then Sheldon. Are we going to Exner first? Is that, that the finger is about, okay. All right, Counselor Exner, Hokinson, and then Sheldon.
All right. My first off, I got a couple of questions, but I want to make kind of a statement. I think that I was listening to Counselor Walker's concerns about a lot of the different things. That we have really no control over. I think we need to focus on the parts and pieces that are not legislatively required. And there's a lot of that stuff in there. And we had an opportunity a couple of years ago to put input into it. And a number of us did, and in some cases we got ignored. Some cases they did some changes, but they didn't put them in there the way we wanted them. So here we are. 2021, we got just three or four months to be able to respond and fix. So we should focus on the discretionary items and maybe some administrative, but we should focus on the problems and the solutions that we can use to make sure that what we have is the best we have. So I would say let's focus on that. I understand the energy and the concerns and the emotion, but for this point, let's talk about pieces that we can. So Counselor Pete Sold talked about some things that I wanted to bring up, so I'll pass on that one. But I was going to add one, two questions. One to Emily. In what condition, what place would we ever consider putting anything, a construction of any development on our hazardous designations? That really kind of makes me curious about why would even think about doing something like that? Or did I make that misunderstanding?
No, our, our current code does allow a single family residence to be constructed or built in our flood and slope hazard. I don't, I don't think it's a good idea, but it is allowed. There, there's a whole list of things that are allowed in there. I mean, there's, you know, there's review criteria that we would go through cumulative impacts, native vegetation impacts, all sorts of things. But our code does allow single family residential. So we originally thought we had expanded that to duplexes. But then we found out that there is an exemption if you're going to increase hazard to people or, or property. So you have to do that.
I might have misstated. I was thinking about putting in double or even triple the number of housings inside a, a lot that's only restricted to a single. So I guess my question was a little bit misstated, but thank you. We, we do have that flexibility, though, to say no to duplexes. That's good to know that. And then the other one was Counsel Pete's got it for me. So I'm done.
Thank you. Counselor Sheldon, I mean, Hokinson, are you going? I'm sorry, you put the hand down and it totally confused me. You're up.
I was ready.
Okay, you're, you're good to go.
Okay. I thought when we started, we're just doing questions, but it looks like we're kind of putting some positions out there. So forgive me. But maybe in the interest of time, I, I throw a proposal out for all of us in terms of propositions. But this is a compliance problem, number one, right? This is not, was not driven by a discretionary need or some desire to increase housing. We have to do certain things by a certain time. So. And we have this comp plan update that's coming, which allows us to rethink a whole lot of things, including goals around housing and cost effectiveness and, and a lot of other options. I think it makes a lot of sense to me to move forward with the non-discretionary things that we have to do to be compliant and to sit on those discretionary items. Unless there's something that we have clear consensus on in the next meeting, you know, specifically. But we, we can revisit the rest of that in our comprehensive plan overview and, and the community input, decide really what we want to be. That way, we avoid the discussions about should we go beyond duplexes to triplexes and all these other things. That's, that's a broader topic. It's going to take a lot of discussion and we don't have the time for that. So that is my proposal. And I would like to respond to also to the, the, oh shoot, now I lost her name, the lady who testified from the HBA. The big difference that she mentioned that I think we have to keep in mind is the way, the proposals we're talking about now, the ADUs, the duplexes, that increases rental property. Implementing what she suggested increases things that would be sold for people. And I don't know which is better, but they're just different. And I think we just need to keep that in mind as we look at this. You're not going, you can't sell half a duplex, but, but you can sell a townhouse. Carl says I'm wrong, so I guess you could sell half a duplex, but the titling is going to be a little interesting. So primarily though, you get an ADU, you do, you build a duplex, you modify your existing house to become a duplex, you're going to be generating rental income. So it has a lot of other benefits to owners as well. So anyway, that's what I recommend, minimal approach. That's my feedback.
Thank you, Councilor. I just want to remind everyone, as we're not, you know, we're not finishing this discussion up tonight. And so it's now 9:38. And as I say, look at the agenda. I mean, we, we still have a lot we're tackling, folks. Just keep that in the back of our minds as we proceed. Counselor Sheldon.
More interested right now to see what Kelly has to say real quick before I start chatting.
All right, Kelly.
Thank you. I was just going to hit on a few things. I understand Counselor Walker's position on the parking. I think that's something we could explore in the future, but it's going to be very difficult. Because with a traditional single family home that's detached, I would agree with Counselor Walker that what we're seeing is probably three to four to five to six parking spaces per unit. The problem is, is that with row houses that are on 20 foot wide lots, most of those are only putting in two parking spaces. And so I think how the state legislator would review those lots is, those lots also have to accommodate a duplex. And therefore, I don't know how you would require any more than two parking spaces. I don't, it'd be a lot of analysis in our code. I don't think we could make a finding to justify it. So I just want to throw that out there. The duplex ownership question, yeah, you can, but you have to do a condominium. So you'd have to condomize the duplex and then the common ownership area is the lot. And then each side of the duplex is owned by an individual through dividing through a condo plat. And then I had one more thing I was going to give you guys some feedback on, but I forgot. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Kelly. Counselor Sheldon, you ready?
I am. Yeah, I know we're pressed for time and we're all ready to go to bed. But I also think it's important that we give staff the guidance that they need and tonight's that opportunity. So if you have something to say, I think it needs to be said tonight, in my opinion. So I, I want to echo Jeremy's thing about the parkland. I'll just leave it at that. I, I struggle with being preemptive to make it less than, to adjust it now. If the legit, right now, we're, we're already, we're bickering about what we can control. And if that's something we can control to keep funding for our parks and to continue to beautification and continue to add, I don't think we need to look at removing that as a proactive piece. If later on, they decide that that's a piece that we need to, to readdress and we can come back and simply readdress it then. I also struggle a little bit with the townhomes. I think that could possibly be. So the, a lot of this, I think, is what we need to remember is we need to remember what we can control. A lot of this is be, but we can still control things like lot sizes. And, and what I've learned in watching this is the minute you open up indoors box, you kind of got to own everything that comes with it. So by tinkering with stuff, like allowing, you know, extra, anything extra, allowing it, I think we're opening ourselves up for further challenges. We have a variance process that someone can apply to go through. And that needs to be the process that's used in regards to, you know, putting duplex versus the row homes. Again, I think I can just see that being used to bypass our 7,500 square foot minimum for a single family lot. If there's, there's already zoning that allows that, that's where it needs to go. And again, if, as, as things change, then we can do that. It creates opportunities with the duplex. If somebody chooses to do that, it creates business opportunities for those people that choose to do that. And, and we're not limiting that, but we also need to be very cautious about where we create these, these expectations in, or I'm sorry, exceptions where we trying to be preemptive. So those are my thoughts on them.
Thank you, Counselor Sean. I see a hand up.
Oh yeah, this is just a minor clarification. Kelly, I thi, I think you mentioned that if you allowed that, that kind of row house configuration, say, one unit next to another unit, they're attached. So it looks like a duplex, but they're actually each on individual lots. Division 46 wouldn't apply to that. So you, you guys would have, that, that would be an additional option that you are welcome to pursue, but, but are not required to. So.
Can you explain that more? I'm, I guess I'm not following along 100%.
Yeah, yeah. So House Bill 2001 requires medium cities, in this case, the city of Sandy, to allow a duplex on each lot or parcel that allows for a single family detached dwelling, which means two lots on one parcel. That configuration in an attached configuration is required for the city of Sandy. A lot of jurisdictions, the city of Ontario is an example, thought, you know, well, if we're allowing two units on one lot, why not allow them to have, you know, essentially a lot division for that? So they can have two side by side duplexes and sell it in a fee simple configuration. By doing that, that's, that's an optional piece that is outside of Division 46. They're welcome to pursue that, but they are not required to.
Got it.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for questions and discussion. Is there any more direction you want to give staff before we just, you know, address this at a further, at a further meeting? All right, good discussion. I don't like it either. I hate it when the state tramples all over our home authority here locally. It's pretty bad. All right. So David, what do we do? We just, do I need to do any formal motion to move, postpone or to keep the motion, the meeting open? Or what do you suggest?
Yeah, so certainly keep the, the hearing open. And since it's legislative, it, it would be probably ideal if you just went ahead, even if you don't take it up at your next meeting, just to continue it to, what would the next April meeting be?
Can we do April 19th?
April 5th is the next meeting, but April 19th is more likely.
So I would just go ahead, Mayor, and say, carry it over until April 19th and you, you most likely pick up the discussion then, or you could choose to carry it even further.
Right. Do we have a motion to carry the meeting to April 18th? I see a motion from Counselor Smallwood, a second. From Counselor Exner. All right. Motion from Counselor Smallwood, second from Counselor Exner, and to roll the meeting forward to April, to the 19th of April. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Give me a thumbs up. Aye. Pose nay or thumbs down? All right, great. One last words. I agree with Counselor Hokinson. I thought that was all spot on, on how we should proceed with this. So, okay. With that, yep, thanks, Sean. Appreciate it. Appreciate staff's work on this. A lot of work in this. Appreciate it. All right, let's go forward to the public hearing, amending Title 13 of the Sandy Municipal Code. Jordan, or do I have a?
Mike Walker, Public Works Director is here for the presentation. This is bringing back that Title 13. We brought it to the council for preliminary review, had some comments and questions, which Mike had written up responses and shared those with the city council and incorporated the, the edits. So this is bringing this back for council adoption.
Yeah, just in the interest of brevity, this is, the, what's before you are the changes and responses that were, you know, were sent out to the council on February 12th, based on the comments from the work session on February 1st. There's also some changes that were made based on the city attorney's review. And those are in the sections identified in the staff report and shown in purple on the red line document. There's a, you know, limited vegetarian impact. And this is primarily to help us deal with inflow and infiltration on private sewer laterals, which are, we're going to be start, which we will start rehabbing in sometime in April or May, once price from the contract for that works. So this just gives the city the flexibility to do that. We also made a few housekeeping changes, but we have the ordinance opened up. So the recommendation is to approve the changes to Title 13. And if any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any question, uh, questioners? Well, are there any questioners for Mike? All right, see now, is there a motion? To proceed?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance 2021 dash two.
I guess Jeff, do you need to do the first reading? That's a really polite way of reminding the mayor to call for the first reading, Counselor Hokinson.
I was just reading the script.
Appreciate it, buddy.
This is ordinance 2021 dash zero two, an ordinance amending Title 13 Water and Sewer of the Sandy Municipal Code.
All right, motion about the first reading?
I'll second it.
Well, I, I need a motion. Sorry.
Oh, I thought it was motion. I'm sorry. I'll make a motion that, for the, whatever.
Yeah.
Prove the first reading.
Okay, second. Third second. All right, Sheldon, thank you. I'm screwing this up, guys. It's on me. Motion on Counselor Pete Sol, second from Counselor Sheldon, adopt the first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye.
Aye.
Pose nay or thumbs down? All right, first reading passes. Jeff, you may do the second reading.
This is ordinance 2021 dash zero two, an ordinance amending Title 13 Water and Sewer of the Sandy Municipal Code.
Thank you, Jeff. Sir, motion adopt the first reading.
I move that we adopt the second reading.
Thank you, Counselor. Third second. Counselor Smallwood. Ah, Sheldon, I'll go Sheldon this time. All right. Motion from Counselor Exner, a second from Counselor Sheldon to adopt the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Pose nay or thumbs down? Motion carries. All right, you guys are carrying me along here. I appreciate it. On the new business, Tickle Creek Village Trail Easement Fee and Lou Proposal.
I have a question, Mayor, first. Were we supposed to have, and did I just miss it, public hearing? So should we have opened it up for the public to comment?
The advisement I've had is we don't, we don't, we don't have to.
You didn't need to for this. No, there wasn't a requirement.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
Thank you. All right, moving on, Tickle Creek Fee and Lou. Jordan.
Thanks, Mayor. Sarah Richardson is here tonight to give the staff report. I think Kelly can also help answer questions. And then the applicant's consultant is also here tonight. I think our Parks and Trails Board Chair, Dawn, there he is, is also here in attendance. If there's any questions about the Parks Board recommendations that are in the staff report or attached to staff report. Sarah, turn it over to you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to try to be succinct here. It's a long night for you all. I want to give an overview of the Parks Board recommendation with regard to the Tickle Creek Villages. I want to give an overview of the Parks Board recommendation with regard to the Tickle Creek villages. The board had an opportunity to review this development on two occasions. One in January of twenty twenty and one in December of twenty twenty. This development is located between Ruben and Dubarco, kind of comes together there at the corner. And at the first meeting, the board voted to recommend fee in lieu of land dedication. And the developer came back in December of twenty twenty with a few other proposals. One of, the first proposal was to provide a trail easement through the property that would allow us to connect Sunset to Dubarco, which is, you know, comes in pretty close to where you can also connect to Tickle Creek Trail. As a side note, the city has a right-of-way up towards the top of where that trail easement would be, and we might be able to put those two things together, work with the developer to construct the trail, which is the second part of that proposal. Trail easement would be in exchange for fee in lieu credits. Building the trail would be in exchange for SDC credits. And the second proposal, the developer wanted to present to the Parks Board was dedicating the land that is adjacent to the development site, which is right along Ruben. You're probably familiar with it. It's a wetland area, sometimes referred to as the Beaver Pond. And ultimately, the Parks Board voted in favor of the trail easement and working with the developer to construct the trail in exchange for those variety of credits. But they did not vote in favor of the land dedication. And so council tonight can consider the Parks Board recommendation. And I believe Dawn may have some additional comments. And I know that the developer's representative, Tracy Brown, would like to address the council with regard to the land dedication.
Eric, or Jeff, can somebody put a big map up there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Somebody put a visual, a map or something up from the exhibits up on the share the screen or something, so that everybody's looking at the same proposal.
Kathleen, I have one in my presentation when I get to that.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, so we're there. But Dawn, do you want to go? Are we going to get something from Parks?
Well, I would go ahead and defer to Tracy to do his presentation before I discuss a little bit of what we've talked about. I do want to make one clarifying point from Sarah's talk there. What we were approving on, for the SDC credits, was the trail connection to the street on the site. It was not for the entire trail system throughout the property. I think that's an important point to clarify. So we were recommending the fee in lieu for the, the small linkage to the street, but not the main trail system that goes through the, the development.
Okay, thank you, Dawn. Appreciate that. Tracy?
Yeah, thank you. My name is Tracy Brown. I'm land use planner, working in Sandy. And I'm representing the developer, who is a Dubarco Development Corporation. Just a little bit about the project. It's known as the Tickle Creek Village Project. And it was approved by the city in January of twenty twenty. It includes a total of sixty-seven units, and there's twenty-five buildings. And we platted as a condominium project rather than multifamily housing. The overall property includes about over ten acres, and a substantial part of it is included with the wetland and associated buffers. So really, the primary developmental, developable portion of the property is about four point two-three acres. And some of that is in a restricted area. So I think what I'll do now is just share my screen and kind of show you a map of the property. Are you able to see that?
We are.
Okay, so for reference, this is Ruben Lane coming down the hill. There's condominiums across the street here, and this is Dubarco. The entrance to the project will be off of Dubarco here. And the, you know, this is the outline, the hatched areas, the outline of the delineated wetland. So quite a bit of the property is in wetland. The trail, kind of schematic trail, that the developer has identified would go essentially kind of along the edge of the wetland to this point over here. And this is where there's a kind of a right-of-way of Sunset that continues all the way over to the existing street of Sunset. That's, you know, not part of this project. So in the final order of the proper, of the project, the city requested that the, or required the applicant to pay a fee in lieu of park dedication. And the order also says, alternatively, the applicant can submit an appraisal for the land in the restricted development area north of the condos. And this is kind of the area we're talking about. And the city may be open to considering providing park fee credit, compensate the applicant for this land. There is also a requirement to construct the woodchip trail through the site from Dubarco Road to the Sunset Street alignment, and that's the trail I'm kind of outlining there. The order did ask the applicant to provide a variable width pedestrian easement that included the trail. Also submit a engineer's cost estimate for the woodchip trail. And the city would determine whether reduction of park SDCs is warranted. And then staff also recommended that the applicant could install benches along the woodchip trail. So in the, in discussion with the property owner, you know, he's generally willing, I guess. You know, this is a, is a trail that cuts through his property. And it's, as you can see, it's pretty close to the back of his condos. So he does have a bit of concern about the public using this trail behind his property. And, you know, who will be maintaining the trail, policing it, collecting garbage and all that kind of thing? And whether people will be able to use this at midnight or, you know, after hours, we'll say after sunset. So he does have concern about that. He is willing to do it with reasonable compensation, as long as he can construct this with using woodchips. And he would retain ownership of the property. And so he would have some control over the use of the property or of the trail. Due to, and due to location of trail, as I mentioned, he's concerned about after dark use and trash on the trail. As was noted in the staff report, and his feeling is that woodchips are a less cost and more environmentally sound option than crushed gravel. This area is pretty much everything between the wetland and almost to the units. And actually, I can zoom in here. You can see this dash line. This is all restricted development area, which is the buffer to the wetland area. So that's, that's part of the reason he prefers doing this as a woodchip trail rather than crushed gravel, because it would be less impact. And I assume that's the reason that the planning staff recommended, recommended that as well. At this time, we haven't, he hasn't had an appraisal done. And I kind of urged him just to hold off before he did that, because an appraisal costs a couple thousand dollars. And if there's really no interest by the city, then that's not money well spent. And he also hasn't had an engineer's estimate done of the trail itself to determine the cost. And primarily, the reason for that is, you know, the trail needs to be kind of field located. There's a lot of trees in this area. And so it's going to meander around the trees. And so we don't know exactly how long the trail is and, you know, how it's going to meander through the property. I did walk the property on Saturday, beautiful day in Sandy. And I wanted to just share some pictures of the area with you. So this is a shot, you know, try to zoom out a little bit. This is a shot looking, kind of standing at the entrance. Right now, there's a gravel driveway. And so the trail would kind of come up to the left of this and then swing over. I'll just go back again to the, so I was standing right about here and taking that picture. And so the trail will come up kind of near the drive and then swing to the left for the wetland area. The shot here is kind of at the north end of where the condos will be, kind of just over into the restricted development area, kind of looking north. And you can see the other condos across the street, and that's Ruben Lane, where that sign is in the background. There is a couple of water bodies moving through the site. There's primary one that comes, it's actually No Name Creek, the same creek that comes through, you know, the park, Minnick Park. And it extends through the site, and then it dumps into Tickle Creek, just downstream of the other condos across Ruben Lane. So I walked around. I started over here. And that's where the condos will be, and kind of walked around the edge of the property. And when you get out to the middle of the property, I'll go back to the map. I'm kind of out in this area. There's an upland area, pretty nice little upland area, and there's some trees in this area. And I'm, so I'm looking back at the, we'll call it the southern pond. And the next photo is of the northern pond. And so this is looking kind of north. And so his property goes all the way up to, just on the other side of these deciduous trees, where you start getting into the evergreens over here. And this is just a little bit closer. Look at the pond. And, you know, actually, the water is surprisingly clear. Saw a lot of bird life in the area and heard a lot of frogs. So you can imagine around a swampy area like this or a wetland area. So that's, you know, that's kind of it in a nutshell. You know, the, I guess the owner is, you know, willing, he'd like to work with the city. You know, he's definitely interested in being compensated for the trail. He would ultimately like to dedicate this part of the property to the city. If the city is interested in that as well. And, you know, it could include a, a trail system that kind of went around the, outside of the property or of the wetland, and maybe even a little viewing platform or something in that middle section. But that's kind of a parks planning concept. But it was helpful for me to actually visit the site, you know, just looking at it from Ruben Lane. You don't really appreciate what's going on and the complexities of the ecosystem that's out there. So I don't know if there, are there any questions for me about the, what he is proposing? Be glad to try to answer those.
Counselor Hockinson.
Hey, how deep is that, are those marshes, those ponds when, during the wet season?
I don't know. Like, you know, I, I'm guessing fifteen, twenty feet. I, I'm not really sure. And they do expand. I mean, there's, there's definitely, you know, signs, that first, one of the first photos I shot of the, kind of the marshy kind of fringe. And you can see as you walk through there, there's little rivulets, or they're kind of dry right now, rivulets. So I think it kind of expands and then shrinks.
And do we know what lives in it? Has there been an environmental assessment on it? Do we know what's alive?
We know that there's been beaver there in the past, but other than that, we don't know.
They mysteriously disappear when it starts to flood, too.
Yeah, I think there was, they did do a little dam building. And I think one of them was relocated a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Pete Solzak and Walker?
Yeah, I was curious on your map there. If you go back to it, you showed two parts of the trail that would go into the industrial park and maybe towards Sunset there. And I was reading something about it going to Sunset. But where would, is it just going to dead end into the side of the property, towards the, yeah, right there, towards the industrial park, and then that one's towards Sunset there?
Yeah, so this, this is the end of his property. And there is an unimproved right-of-way that goes all the way out to that curve. I think it's where Toll meets Sunset, right there. You know, I drove by that a couple of times recently as I was looking at the property. And that's currently fenced off, and it's real thick blackberries. But, you know, right there is where Tickle Creek kind of dumps out, or not Tickle Creek, but No Name Creek dumps out, and it flows along there within that, basically along that right-of-way. And then it comes into the property over here. I don't know if that answers your question, but, yeah.
And then the other piece there toward, where you said dumped out there, it kind of jets up. Is that going towards the industrial park there?
Yeah, the industrial park is all over here. Now, you're standing right here. It's a fairly steep bank that goes up to the industrial park. And, but the creek is between the industrial park and this property.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't see anyone. Thank you. Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I was just gonna kind of chime in and say, yeah, it's a beaver pond. The beaver tends to block up the culvert and then ends up getting, quote unquote, relocated. And then the pond is drained and it's, you know, the, it doesn't empty out totally. But the whole pond, you know, when the beavers are in there and blocking everything up, it's probably about four to six, four to five feet deep, maybe. And, and then, and then it goes down to about, you know, a foot and a half of a lot of mud and some water.
Thank you. Counselor Smallwood?
Yeah, so just in regard to the trail, I really like trails. I love trails. I use all the trails here in town. My concern with this trail is that it's got a lot of potential to invite increased homeless individuals hanging out in that location. One, because it's why, it's close to a water source. Two, it's kind of hidden. I don't really like the fact that it's butted up right next to residential like that, with that capability, especially with some of the legislation that's potentially coming down from the state. It's going to allow people to basically just set up camp wherever they like. So, so this is, this is one of those things where I'm really torn. Like, I, I agree with the Parks decision, but I also kind of don't like that trail being right there the way it is. So that's, that's kind of where, where I'm, where I'm sitting with it.
Thank you. Counselor Exner and Sheldon?
Find that unmute button. Tracy, I think I know where it's at, but would you show me where the, the Tickle Creek Trail is in relationship to the, I guess it'd be the west end of this proposed trail? And the reason why, why you're doing that, could you put the map up there and show us where that is? Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, it's just across the, so directly across from this is that kind of grassy park that's, that the city owns, hasn't been developed. But, yeah, the trail's in the woods on the other side of Tickle Creek there.
Yeah, I think it's down a little bit from where you're, you're hanging.
You were talking about one of the entrances to the.
A bridge that goes right across the creek.
Yeah, it's, it's off the map. So it's closer to Sandy Heights, just before Sandy Heights. You go past the Mobile Home Park. So this is the Mobile Home Park here. Go past the Mobile Home Park, probably roughly, it's kind of right in this area somewhere where my hand is, based on the scale.
I guess my thought was, is that there is a possibility of connection with this trail to the Tickle Creek Trail, which is really a popular place. I don't get to run it like some other counselor does, but I do walk it. And I know I've got several folks that go walking it with me. And I appreciate being able to have trails in the community. I'm like Counselor Smallwood, trails, I just love, especially something that has a connection to a water source like this. This is one of those more unique spots in the Sandy that you can get to relatively easily. And it has the potential of all kinds of wildlife, insect, birds, fish. I drove by the other day, I think it was Saturday, when the weather was pretty much perfect. I must. Um, I drove by the other day, I think it was Saturday when the weather was pretty much perfect. I must have missed Tracy, but I did see a father, son out there fishing away. I don't know if that's legal or not, but certainly was attractive for it, so. But it looks like there's some attract, there's a possibility of also trailing up to the, the future wastewater treatment plant site as well, making some trail connections that way. I know we've got some trails that go from there up to the top where Nettie Canet is. So there's some, there's some if not really easy, at least some places where it might be connected over time, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Sheldon.
Yeah, for brevity, I really like this, but I did have a little concern. It sounded like the property owner wanted to maintain ownership and control access a little bit. What is, what does that look like exactly?
That's a good question. You know, I, that's needs to be figured out, I guess, in more detail. You know, his concern is, you know, if somebody's back there on the trail hanging out nine o'clock at night, who does he call? If it's, if he has more control, he can roust them off the trail. But that's what his main concern is. So he wants to be able to provide, you know, public gas access through it. But he wants some level of control. So I don't know the answer to the solution or the question exactly, but kind of explore, it needs to be explored further.
And these are, are these condos or apartments?
They're condos.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, so that's my, that's my hang up. I really like it. I, I, I mean, transient people, if that's where they want to go, that's where they're going to go either way, in my experience and sometimes if that's where people run, that's where they're going to run, call the same people. Um, I, I would think that there's some more challenges with uh, somebody owning a trail that's open to the public. It becomes premise open to the public and then trying to restrict access. And who do you call? I could see some potential challenges all the way around for that. So until that would be clear. That's kind of, I, I wouldn't support it unless that was a lot more clear.
All right. Thank you councillor. Appreciate it. I see councillor Walker and then we'll go with Kelly and then councillor Pete Sol.
We hear from the representative from the parks board. I really appreciate the staff report from Sarah and the information from Tracy. Um, I think Don Robertson has something to add. And I will just go on the record as saying, just from experience that um, the woodchip trails came up and having woodchip trails where it rains as much as it does. If, if they're not, you know, when they're leveled, they just become, you know, wet and soggy mud bogs. And when they're not level, which is what you want them to be, you want them to be able to drain. Um, when we get these frog drowning, you know, storms, then the woodchips just end up getting washed off the trail completely. Well, that's why we go with packed gravel. It's just a little bit of information, but I would like to hear from Don on his, on the parks board. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. And Don's hands up and he'll be after councillor Pete Sold in the queue. All right, Kelly. Kelly O'Neill.
Yeah, sorry. It's getting late tonight.
Yep.
Um, so I just wanted to provide clarity. Tickle Creek Trail, the the, um, the start of that particular section actually showed up on the map that Tracy showed. It was on the left-hand side. So on the west-hand side of the barco, so it's actually north, a little north. It, it was on that map that he showed. So it is in relative close location to this trail. The only other thing I was going to bring up is there was a question, I believe, four and a half hours ago, or whatever that was, about capital improvement projects and how you would do SDC reimbursement. My thought on that, it's a really good question that councillor Walker posed, but my thought on that is we got a trail on this general location added to the parks master plan. So it's in the parks master plan now. If you added it into the capital improvement list, when you go to update that capital improvement list, then it would be eligible for park SDC reimbursement. So I just wanted to clarify that. It was a good question that councillor Walker brought up, and I just wanted to say, if you did want to consider that, you would just want to put it in the CIP once that master plan is adopted.
Thank you, Kelly. Councillor Pete Sol's next and councillor Walker, your hand still up. If you want to be in the queue, I'll keep you there or put it down. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey, Jeremy.
Hey, yeah, I, I think Kathleen is right on on the woodchips. He is a runner. Just go down to the, the trails down there. It's like the worst thing to run on in wet. And it's always wet, as well as the flooding or rain, they just go away. Um, so I'd be really concerned about that, especially if we're going to spend any SDC money on that. I think it should be built to our standards and not what developer wants on that. I also think that if the SDC money is to be used for this, or this is to be done with it, that it would need to be into the control of the city and not the landowner of that for a lot of reasons that were brought up, because he wants to want to have control over it. But now if we're using SDC money for this, and we, we should, that should be part of our trail system as the city and not then privately own trail systems through that. I think the connection to sunset, I appreciate Tracy, you bringing that up, that that is a right of way there. And we've identified that with the parks before, as I used to be the representative to the parks for many, many, many years and identifying some of those other ones that the city can then establish, because part of the development that we've had over the years is the connectivity, regardless of the trail or not. Let's just say the trail wasn't even there. Just the connectivity that would be to embarkle by walking um, through and can in connection, so people don't have to walk around through the city is important. And so that's one of the things we have for block links as well as other things. So having a right of way there that we can then come back and capitalize on that right way by putting in a trail um, in that just for walkability, regardless of the trail is, is great. And I appreciate bringing up that that is a right of way we can pursue. But that's my opinion on the SDC. I agree with Rich there on that. It needs to be, it needs to be owned by the city. So, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Don Robertson, you're up, and then councillor Exner's after.
Great, thank you very much. Not meaning to pile on too much on the, the trail construction section of it. You know, after many, many years of managing trails and building trails and general recreation facilities, I can assure you that, yes, it costs a little bit of money to do it in gravel as opposed to do it in bark, but the, the real long-term cost of maintaining that trail over years and decades and, and more. It, it pales in comparison. You know, the construction pales in comparison of that. So really do yourself a favor. If you're going to build a trail, don't use the bark chips. It'll last for one good rain and then it just starts disappearing quickly and deteriorates. And Kathleen's absolutely right. It, it becomes a bog. It is not not a pleasant experience, not a usable experience in an urban setting. So that's my two cents on the, the trail, you know, do it in gravel or don't do it. Um, if the developer does want to continue doing it and does want to insist on doing it in gravel or in, in woodchips and does want to have some control over it, it suggests that it remain as part of their condo association. Um, and they can maintain it as such. Uh, that also gives them the, the right or the ability to call the police if there's unwanted activity on there. Um, after posted hours, if they wanted to post those or, or, you know, any kind of signage that says that the trail is restricted to condo owners only. It'd allow them to enforce those rules and so they wouldn't have to worry about it. If they want to have hours across their property, um, you could handle it in a couple of ways. One would be to, to uh, do a pedestrian access easement to the city. Um, it would not restrict the condo, or it would restrict the condo people from enforcing the rules themselves beyond simple peer pressure. Uh, but it absolutely provides more protection for the, the liability issues. It, it still would fall under the recreational immunity laws in the state of Oregon. So you know, six one-way, half a dozen the other, as far as that goes. Getting to the question of the, the pond, one of the things in, in our discussions that came up is that we have a significant amount of natural area within the city and and the highest density of natural area, if that's not a uh, kind of a contrary statement, is within that Tickle Creek area. So it'd be adding on to that. Now I've spent many years of my career arguing for acquisitions of properties. And rarely do I argue against acquisitions of properties, but in this case, I would suggest that you don't acquire that property. Um, the, the property itself is protected. It's not going to get drained. It's not going to get built on. I'm sure the city has plenty of, of uh, zoning requirements or code requirements that protects that area. And the state also has code requirements that protect that area. So in essence, by by crediting fee in lieu or SDCs to purchase that property, you're spending money that, that we, you know, have coming in, that we have the ability to use for other very worthy projects that we're very short on. Um, many of our parks are in dire needs of everything from new playgrounds to the new walkways, picnic tables, all the amenities um, that can be purchased with fee in lieu of, not necessarily SDCs, but the, the fee in lieu of side of things to help continue providing quality recreational experiences, not just for the new residents, but the older and established residents. So you know, it's really hard to have to make those choices between acquiring that property and looking at other greater needs for the city. And I believe that in our case, our greater needs outweigh um, the purchase of that property with a fee in lieu of or SDC credits. So I'll quit stammering and stuttering and let you guys continue your deliberations.
Thank, thank you, Don. Councillor Exner, you're next. One thing I'd just say to everyone is like, I'm, I'm hearing everyone really feeling the same way. And so, I mean, I don't know if we have to kind of beat, you know, something over the head to, to move forward. Councillor Exner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to say councillor Pete Sol, ditto. I think that's really great. Except, and I really hate to do this to you, Don, but I'm going to disagree with you about the pond. One of the things that the council has done in the, just this last goal-setting experience was we just wanted to get some biodiversity within the city and get it uh, in my mind, get it under control. I have seen more than a few HOAs private land, once the developer is complete and moves on, and I have no reason to believe this person would be anything worse or better than what we've seen in the past. But as an HOA, we just don't see the kind of control that you would if the city has it. And I, I guess for me, we have some way to to get some very inexpensive land on a piece of property right smack in the middle of the city that has such a diverse amount of not just vegetation, but also insect and waterfowl. Beavers, you can just name it. I'm sure that we're to do a survey if that was ever needed, you'd find far more species in this particular piece of pond than we ever find in some of the other places, even the creeks and such, which are really premium. I have nothing to say against those. I just think this is a opportunity to get a piece of property that if nothing else, will hold in land bank for whatever number of years it takes. Think about the education. We looked at the Fernwood property over near Hillsboro and about how the kids came over and took a look at that property and were able to do educational investigation, adults walking around, doing visual uh, bird watches and all the rest and trail around the outside of that particular piece of property would really be a plus for the city. We don't really have a pond inside the city. I mean, we've got some water, we've got some creeks. And we just don't have something like that right smack in the middle. I think this would be a great one. I would suggest that we at least look at what the cost would be to do an exchange for it. And I think that would be at least something that we should be at least interested in. Uh, because if, I know that it won't be used for anything else, but I think it has some real big potential. Uh, not just because it's a pond, but because of that connection issue between the property up by the wastewater treatment plant, clear on through down to the Tickle Creek Trail. So I think we should take a look at that.
All right. Thank you councillor. Councillor Walker.
I'm going to weigh in with what councillor Smallwood said. From what I understand about this bill that's coming down the pike of thirty-one fifteen with homeless, uh, we're not going to have a lot of options. I, you know, I've kind of done a two, a three sixty or whatever, one eighty, I don't know, whatever, or one eighty. Well, basically, you know, I'm all about trails and stuff, but um, I understand this gentleman's interest in keeping control over it. I think that's probably prudent in this situation because once House Bill thirty-one fifteen passes, we are going to have very little control about controlling access and homeless populations in that area. If they have control of it, it's going to be a lot easier for the cops to go in there and do what they need to do. Um, so I'm going to support what councillor Smallwood said. I'm going to make a motion that we um, not provide fee in lieu of, that they, they need to build the trail as per the final order, that we not acquire the pond property and that we not provide fee in lieu of for construction of trails in that site.
There's a motion on the floor. Councillor Pete Sol.
Just a clarification, and David, maybe you can help me. Doesn't the applicant get the last response? And I know we had a lot of talking, but maybe it's a different type of aspect. So I just want to make sure we haven't not done that before we make the motion.
Yeah, in, in this case, councillor Pete Sol, it's, it's not, the land use piece has already happened. This is more or less a request that's come up afterwards. So that, that formality wouldn't apply here.
Okay, thank you. We got a motion on the floor from councillor Walker. I'm looking for a second or further discussion.
Can I, can I ask or say a couple of things?
Sure, I would, I would appreciate brevity.
Yeah, so I guess it's sounding like, I mean, at least motion is not wanting to find compensation, but the final order is saying build a trail. So those things don't work very well with Landy's planning because it's considered a taking of that, his property. So by your decision tonight, by not providing compensation, you're effectively saying there will be no trail. Just want to make that clear. And the conditions of approval in the final order would be considered null and void.
So, so somebody, Tracy or, or somebody else, just sort of educate me a little bit. Is the decision, the Landy's decision, has that been made and was it appealed? I mean, this isn't the appeal, obviously. So how did that, where does that stand?
It's, it's a final decision.
When, so was it, it wasn't, did the applicant appeal it?
No, he didn't appeal it.
Okay, I don't think we need to get into discussion about that tonight. If, if we need to do a modification to the final order, we can do that, or we can work with the applicant on that. I don't think, this was never opened as a quasi judicial decision. The appeal period's way, like two years past. We can't make any decisions tonight as a body. It was a staff decision. So I'll take a look at the order in the next couple of weeks and work with Tracy. And if we need to do a modification, we'll work with our attorney's office to do that. But um, I don't, I don't want to weigh this meeting down with that because it's not really the time or place to make a change in the final order, in my opinion.
Hey, Mary, can I, can I propose a different?
Totally.
So I would just, I would propose that we just move forward with whatever the final order says. Just leave it at that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. There's two motions on the floor. Um, councillor Walker, may I politely ask, are you seconding councillor Sheldon's motion?
Yes, is that appropriate? I, I'm
Oh, it's totally, it's totally appropriate. I just wanted to double check considering you had the competing motion. So that's fine. Um, we have a motion on the floor from councillor Sheldon and a second from councillor Walton, councillor Walker. Um, or do you have a point of order, councillor Pete Sol?
Just in the fact that, can we state the final order? Because I'm confused. And it looks like Carl's confused too, because there is this I don't know, confusion there on whether it is. So I just like a statement of what it is. Because I can't figure it out.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, it sounds like it's already, there's already an order out there. I'm just proposing that we stick to what, what we had before and, and the it sounds like a trail was already agreed to be built. Um, and that, um, just leave it at that. I'm not really sure how to word that though.
I, I would, I, I would basically, I guess I'm, just, just to follow up on councillor Sheldon's point, that's kind of where I was going with it. It seems to me what, what was, what was being asked of the council tonight was maybe a sort of a, I don't know, I'll call it creative, or maybe just an add-on to what the city had approved, sounds like a couple of years ago. Um, property owner maybe wanted to do something a little bit different. This was an avenue or an opportunity to maybe make that happen. But obviously that isn't in the cards. I think you just, you know, the final order is what it is. It was never appealed. That issue sort of done at this point.
So do we just deny what, just deny the proposal tonight?
I think, yes, you can, you can simply just have the motion that says basically the, the request isn't granted and you're not doing anything to the final order, nor, nor really could you at this point.
So if I can amend it. So if I can amend it to, I would request that we, dang, Mayor, I'm get, I think you got me tongue-tied, Stan. I, I propose that we deny tonight's proposal by the applicant.
It's fine.
Yeah, and ju- just for clarity, the, I was looking at the final order. The applicant actually proposed the woodchip trail to begin with. What staff did was then ask the applicant to make a consideration to give an easement or dedicate it to the city after consideration by the city council. And with your decision tonight, you're saying you don't want it, you're not gonna give any SDC credit or fee in lieu. I don't think that changes the fact that it's still required to be developed, the trail is just onsite. I'm not saying any off portion portions of the trail, but you're not changing any of that. That's all still in play per the final order.
I'll second it.
Okay, just everyone, hold on. And I think Counselor Hokinson and Jeff are both gonna grin when I do what I'm about to do. Is Counselor Sheldon, I believe what you just did was amend your original motion that was seconded. And so your mo-, your amendment motion on the original motion was then seconded by Counselor Hokinson. Council, we're about to vote on the amended motion, which I believe we're all in support of. So all those in favor signify by saying aye with the thumbs up. Aye. Opposed, a nay or a thumbs down? All right, motion carries. We can move forward in the agenda now. All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Okay. Does somebody just speak up?
Thanks, Don. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, everybody. Yep. All right. So with that, we're on our new business. We're moving on to Owners Rep Services for Wastewater System Improvement Project. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't try to talk too fast, but I will shorten my remarks as much as I can. I tend to ramble. Rob, thank you for hanging out until ten thirty tonight. Rob Lee, who is the Principal of Leeway Consulting Engineers. He's, he's here with us tonight. That's the contract that is before you. It's a contract for Owners Representative Services. Just, just some background. The staff report does go into this a little bit. I just wanted to provide some more verbal detail for you. It's a newer concept, I think, to the city of Sandy. I'm not familiar with any projects recently that Sandy has used in Owners Rep. But something that's becoming more and more common for these larger, more complex capital projects, especially for school districts, cities. You know, in my experience, like Oswego, we used Owners Rep on a couple of projects that I was on. And the idea is that they're bringing experience, their expertise, credentials, and adding capacity for really, you know, a project that we just don't have that, that expertise or experience with. And for our case here, we don't have an engineer on staff. And so bringing somebody who has the, the experience in wastewater projects, especially these type of wastewater projects that we're currently tackling, has been, I think, very valuable for us. And I think it would be valuable going forward with this current phase. And as mentioned in the staff report, I think a program manager is what we're looking at for the larger phases, when we start getting into the MBR permitting and outfall and other discharge opportunities. So this is an, it's not unusual to have an Owners Rep. I guess it's my point here, especially for a city that doesn't have that expertise on site, on, on staff. But what they do is that they're basically an advocate for the city, their extension of staff. They provide additional oversight and coordination for us. They keep the contractors and other consultants honest. They review their invoices. They speak their language so they can cut through the, the, I guess, the BS if they're trying to pull anything on change orders and things like that. The other value they provide is, is things like value engineering. And I think Leeway and their, their work with us and their appointment so far was identifying savings through alternative delivery methods for, for the project that's safest time and money. They review the scope of work and submittals for other RFPs, like in the case of the treatment plant engineering and also the upcoming work for the permitting. So, you know, really, this is, this is a way for us to help manage this complex project that has multiple contractors, multiple consultants interfacing with DEQ and other government agencies, working with stakeholders. They track the budget. They review the submittals. And like I said, they're a valuable part of the, the overall team. You know, I want to mention that we hired Leeway as an appointment to help kick this project off for us last year. And I found a lot of value in having them on the team. We did run up, you know, a problem with just, you know, moving into the Phase One construction and not having the scope or the budget to continue them moving forward with that contract. So we did advertise it and marketed that, that scope out to firms. I think people knew that Leeway was working on it, but also a lot of these firms are interested in the bigger program management, which is fine with us. Because like I said, we've been pretty satisfied with Rob and his team in helping us with this project. So they submitted the, a proposal. And that's in the, the packet of materials in the council agenda. And then the draft agreement, as well as the RFPs in there for your review too, if you have any questions about that. So their services will go through the end of the year, calendar year. It's really focused on helping us execute on the collection system work, the wastewater treatment plant work, but also overall program management with the budget. Like I said, the permitting with DEQ and that work. The WFI application support, the support on other funding with our revenue bonds and other loans with DEQ. And so they'll be continuing that work with us, with this team. So I, staff is recommending council approve the contract tonight. It's not to exceed, I think, of two hundred and forty-seven thousand or thereabouts. So it's, you know, it's based off time and materials. So there is oversight in terms of that work and what we need them. It's sort of an as, as needed, but there is a pretty robust scope that they put together that does give a lot of detail on the, the work that they're gonna be doing for us. So thank you for your time. Like I said, staff recommends approval of the contract tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Smallwood?
Let me lower my hand. Can I make a motion, you guys? Are you good with that or do you have discussion?
I'm good.
All right. I make a motion that we accept the contract for Leeway Engineering.
See a second from Counselor Sheldon. So there's motion on the floor from Counselor Smallwood, a second from Counselor Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying aye, provide me a thumbs up. Aye. Oppose and nay or thumbs down. Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Smallwood. You're, you're my favorite so far this evening. All right, report.
We made Rob stay for that.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it.
Okay, a couple, a couple items. And I think they're, they're important to mention tonight. I'll try to keep it brief. One, this is great news. American Rescue Plan, two point three million dollars is the estimate for the city of Sandy on the local government funding. A lot of the details are still being worked out. It's funding for coronavirus, you know, response expenses for the city, revenue replacement from revenue loss due to the shutdowns. And then also infrastructure spending, which there's a lot of questions still about that. What could be, it could be spent on, how? We do know that we're gonna get half of that in the next, I think, three months. And then the other half in the next fiscal year. So we've just started, we've started putting together a list. I'm sure the council has ideas too, as more information about this and the restrictions or flexibility in the funds come out. We will definitely be sharing that with the council. You know, obviously, we're in the middle of working up our budget. So it'll be part of the budget conversations. But, you know, this type of funding directly to local governments doesn't happen very often, especially with that kind of flexibility. So you know, it's a bit of good news after the end of this long, long year in the pandemic. I did want to touch on the restatement of utility billing practices. I sent an email about this. About how since the start of the pandemic, which we're now a year into this, we did cease the, the, you know, water shut-offs for late accounts and, and the late fees. We think we've reached a point where it's, it's probably time to restart that. Kind of want to get the council's feedback on, on how we do that in a way that's fair and just for, for people that really are struggling due to, due to the pandemic. I kind of included some of the details about where we're sitting right now with about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and, and in total balances past due, only about thirty-five accounts that have a balance that is greater than a thousand dollars. And those go back, I think, most of those go back more than four months. With about, I think only about four of those thirty-five have paid anything this year. Tyler can probably correct me on some of these things. But even some of those accounts go even before the pandemic. So that, you know, it was already late before the pandemic hit. This isn't really revenue loss yet. That, you know, the city does lean properties on overdue utility accounts. And we've been working with our customers, you know, trying to get them to pay whatever they can throughout this. One thing about, you know, a couple of points, most cities have ceased the, the water shut-offs at this point. I think they've kind of reached the, the point where things are opening up again. You know, the stimulus money that is, you know, being sent to bank accounts, you know, right now, have provided people that kind of shot in the arm to be able to pay these bills. And then, you know, I think the, actually the shut-off is a way to get people to actually call the city so we can work with them. We haven't had a whole lot of luck in trying to work with these accounts and try to do these payment plans. And I think it's almost a way to remind people is, you know, you've got a looming shut-off, call us and we can try to work something out. But I would be interested in hearing you kind of what your, your thoughts are and what we could do maybe in verifying that maybe there's people that have been impacted by the virus. And maybe we can focus more, you know, on assisting those people and maybe even, you know, throwing out ideas of if trying to write off, you know, some of their portion and make it easier for them to catch up if they have been impacted, you know, by the, by the COVID impact, you know, impacts by unemployment and, you know, other, other things like that. So just trying to get your take, you know, if it's time to start moving in that direction. I think we, we put it a month out so we can notify and communicate to those people.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Smallwood?
All right. So just so you guys know, I, because Jordan's looking for some feedback, so I'm gonna be super quick. When he sent this email out last week, I, you know, basically sent him an email response and asked if we could look at taking some of that stimulus money potentially, but, or not stimulus, but that COVID relief money and potentially working with some of these individuals. So my thought is this. I have absolutely no problem helping out people who have actually been affected by COVID, whether it be that they did not receive their unemployment benefits. They were out of work for an extended period of time and have gotten behind in their payments. Because when you're, as a lot of us know, when you're behind like that, it's very, very, very difficult to catch up, especially when you're getting hit with everything all at once. But for individuals who've just taken advantage of the situation and decided not to pay, now that's a totally different story. So what I would ask is that maybe we task staff with determining and finding out who, who those individuals are. And then, and then we can kind of work from there.
Or a method, right? A proposed method.
A proposed method of finding out what people have, which people have actually been impacted versus what people have just, you know, hey, I don't have to pay my bill, so I'm not going to.
Like whether it be show proof of unemployment or something, something along those lines.
Yeah. And I think, I think staffer, you know, staffer intelligent enough, they can come up with a good way that'll work because they understand the system. And so I just would kind of like to leave it to them to, to maybe come up with that and then, and then they can come back to us if that.
Thank you, Counselor. Tyler, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I'll be brief as well. But I would say that the likely quickest and most efficient way to get that information is by reinstating our typical shut-off procedures with just added language in the shut-off notice stating, you know, if you have been impacted by the COVID pandemic, please contact our office. And that way we can get a good tally. But we haven't had a lot of success with waiting for people to call us and give us information without, you know, more of a forceful hand and saying, this is the next step. And while we, you know, are obviously willing to work with all customers, to, to get that good information, we're gonna have to have a sort of a hard line in the sand. Otherwise, I don't think we're gonna be able to obtain a good list of who's actually been impacted and who's just taken advantage of the, the delayed shut-off process.
I think that's a great process. I just want to say, I totally agree with where Counselor Smallwood's coming from. I think, Tyler, you've laid out a great direction there. Counselor Exner?
Yeah, I'm not gonna carry on any. Goes into foreclosure, if that's what's going on. There are other solutions too, as he goes along. But you'll need to have some sort of process to push the decision to contact the city. And that's probably the best way.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it. All right, Jordan, I think we're good.
Thank you very much. Just thanks. This was a long night. We still have some more things to go. I just appreciate your time and a lot of heady stuff too. But stuff for you guys to digest. And three, three, three weeks in a row, a lot of stuff on the agenda right now. And we're getting through it piece by piece. But I appreciate your patience and, and, you know, study of these issues. So thanks.
Thank you. Counselor, we're on to committee and council reports. Counselor Sheldon?
Just for brevity tonight, I have nothing.
I love it, man. Counselor Exner?
I've got several things, but for brevity, it's getting so late. I may make a motion one of these days after five and a half hours that we quit. So. Other than that, nothing.
Thank you, sir. Let's go, Counselor Walker?
I just wanted to thank you for sending that thing out about the homeless. I appreciate it. I read it and really enjoyed it. Thanks, Dan.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Hokinson?
Hey, I want to thank Shelley for that good staff report for the rogue manufacturing. I thought that format was improved. So I appreciate that. And I'd also want to just point out that I think our, it's more our struggle with the, the Tickle Creek Village is related to not teeing up the issues clear enough for us. So challenge staff to see if you can't get those a little crisper for us. We know exactly what we're, we're looking at. Took me halfway through that conversation to figure out which end was up. Not sure I ever did. Thanks, though.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Smallwood? No, no, no go. Okay, Counselor Petezel?
All right, I'll be really quick. I got an email, because I'm on all these lists, but the one point nine trillion dollar whatever we're gonna call this rescue plan, basically has a lot of ginormous dollar amounts that with Bs after the end of them. There's an economic development one that's three billion dollars coming out for public works and economic adjustment stuff. So I keep on hearing public works and some of these things and broadband. But there's another one, I'll just quickly point out that two hundred and nineteen point eight billion dollars set aside for investments in water, sewer and broadband infrastructures. So anyways, I know we have some very big sewer things in there and, you know, we don't get what we don't ask for and we don't go after. So I know it's early in the game, this just came out, but let's go see how many of those of that billion, hundreds of billions of dollars we can get. So anyways, if there's any positive note to that, that hopefully we can get a maybe seventy million? I don't know. We'll try. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm gonna go quick. On the, the recovery stimulus package that passed through, I agree. I'd like to see our council get strategic with that money though. You know, like with wastewater stuff coming on, we have some major projects that are gonna garner a lot of attention and money on themselves that we may not necessarily need to dedicate that money to, but we might want to. I'm just saying, let's be strategic in how we do it. So also look to leverage it with what, like what Jeremy was saying. Now, there's lots of money flowing around now where we can kind of find some different avenues to maybe fund some different projects. On that, it'll be interesting to see if we're able to use that for the outdoor structures program. How you need, awesome, is that gonna be if we can fully reimburse that? It's looking like we're gonna be able to. That should be something that we really celebrate. We got prepared and ready and up and online for that, right? We're way ahead of the game because we, we kind of took a shot at that. I'm excited about that. On that topic, RIAS is getting constructed. I believe it's this weekend, might be next weekend. I might be wrong on that, but it's coming up soon. So that's really exciting. On that as well is La Happy's covered a structure project. David just reached out to Jordan and I tonight. Bid, the bid's out today. It's due back April seventh. So that's progressing very well. I keep hearing about this big Saturday dueling protests coming to my community, our community. And so I, you know, I've asked questions of staff and local law enforcement and stuff, but I just want to make sure we're prepared, right? Let's just, you know, let's plan ahead for the, plan for the worst, you know, and, and, and hope that, you know, that doesn't occur. But let's not be caught flat-footed on something that might become into our community. I just want to make sure we're thinking about that. And then the homelessness work session, Counselor Walker mentioned, I sent her kind of a And then the homelessness work session, Counselor Walker mentioned, I sent her kind of a white paper that goes through kind of problem in Portland, as well as some proposed alternative things that we can do. And I think as Counselor Walker was reading through that, she was thinking, oh, this house bill that's going through, gonna mess a lot of it up. I certainly was. So let's keep an eye on that, and I'll send it around to everyone. It may be really useful to read, just so that when we're sitting and talking, we at least have an awareness of what maybe some of our options are on how we can, can deal with these issues. So with that, thank you, everybody. I'm gonna end it here. We're gonna go into our executive session. Long meeting, but everybody participated really well, and just as always, just appreciate you guys' commitment to the cause. So with that, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting, and then we'll wait a couple of minutes, and we'll kick off the executive session.